The thought order for committee meeting of the county council February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. I'd like to make an announcement that if you are here for a land use issue only, you're not concerned about some of the business items upfront, it might ask you to wait out in the foyer. When you get to that part of the meeting, you will come out and bring in the land use people. We'll be clear this one a little bit. So if you're here for land use and don't mind waiting, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Please come to us.
Anybody is welcome to say, but appreciate that. All right, let's go ahead and get started. Our first committee of budget administration, Mr. Shetland.
Carl Baxmeyer, work issues, seventh floor. This is less than appropriation or notification. Thanks to the efforts of Ryan Wild and the assistance of Baycott County Security Grant. Energy Efficiency.
We're to be able to see the passage to region.
Conservation Board. So we are pre-approved, so we can see those as long as we submit an eligible application. Like to submit for full funding with one electric vehicle, one car for funding for another. Partially paid for in the grant, part of the pool. Thanks to the work of Abby and Ryan, charger would also be included. So there's really no additional cost to the county. So we appear to express our support for that. And if you have any questions, I brought the experts with me to answer any of the technical details. So one folder in the parcel. I'm sure we're not getting half the vehicle. I'll just pay another half to talk to you. I'll let you finish, but you know, it's part of our management.
Yeah, so we have about $25,000 left from this grant to go towards another electric vehicle. With the incentives that they're going to have on the electric vehicle that we're looking at late this year, it'd leave around ten grand and we have that already. And December here, we won sports league. This would just harder reduce what we'd be spending money.
I'm Herbie, county auditor. This is related to the American Rescue Plan funding. Total of five million four hundred forty-two dollars, forty-four thousand three ninety-six. Once if this is approved, we'll have about $400,000 left of the American Rescue Plan money that hasn't been obligated. We have about sixteen million that's left in cash, but the balance of that will be obligated. So bring our unobligated amount down to our corner. So what's included in here is County Walkerton, they they weren't able to encumber the money that you originally appropriated for them. So that's a reappropriation. The same with the IPG demolition of the Granger Highway Garage that was a reappropriation of something you've already approved. But courthouse roof and red thunder repair, that's a little bit new. There apparently three Roberts is working on getting some quotes for a roof repair. There's also somebody kind of worth thinking judging the way to. The eight hundred ninety-seven thousand for the Shirley Heinz Land Trust is a reappropriation of what you've already approved. The town of Lakeville project, water project, that's a, I made a $5,000 error in the conference that I did for them. So it's just a re enconference of something that you've already approved. The two point seven million dollars for the new Granger Highway Garage is similar to what was on the list, but it it's it's just focuses on the Granger garage. That's still out. The A P A R P paving dollars of six hundred thirty-eight thousand one fifty, that's just a reappropriation of leftover paving money. That's been already approved. And the legal services, we don't really have a legal purpose in line items, so we included that. And then the rest is related to porridge manor. It's an estimate of the ongoing cost. Security has already been encumbered, so that's not part of this, but that's the estimated cost for through the end of the year, if porridge manor. It remains where it is and part of the county's property. So the moving location expense, electricity, water, sewer. So the total is five million four forty-two, three nine six. Yeah, I could answer any questions you have. Or I didn't get that. It's the ongoing cost for a year of the of maintaining the building, got to keep electricity going and middle on a heat so forth. And so that those are costs related to porridge banner, those last that last section costs. It's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars total. We may or may not spend all of that, but it's our best estimate of what it will be. So if something happens to the building, if it's sold or something sooner than that, then this money will have to spend. Does that make sense?
You said the building is sold.
Well, let's say it changed hands or something or whatever happens.
Is that in the works or you just?
I don't know. I have no idea. It it just assumes that we're we have porridge banner for a full year. This covers the cost of porridge banner building. That makes sense.
No contract to buy the building, run down. There's no contract to buy the building. Somebody wants it, raise your hand. There's no contract by the building.
Well, no, he said that, so.
Yeah.
Confirming there's no such thing.
We keep track of these pretty cool. Go ahead, Mark.
So said the security portion of porridge banner is being kept away somewhere else, someplace else.
That was passed by the commissioner last year. And so there was a, they approved a renewal contract for that. So that's been encumbered already. So it's not part of this budget, but it is part of the A R P budget. Right. That would be a, that would be a, that would be if the entire building was with the same level of force, it could be coming less than that. Does that mean? There was a, the commissioners passed it, they approved a contract with the security company in Semper, so that's been. It's not part of this budget, but it is the part of your.
How much was that per month again? Forty thousand?
Uh, it's roughly five hundred thousand for the year. Let me, I can.
I was running about forty thousand a month last year.
For security. Here is Rafael.
No, 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 I.
I heard that figure. Four eighty-eight, nine ninety-four.
Yeah, that's the balance on the. Any other questions? If a good question.
I have a question. So assuming this passes, we will be down to four hundred more thousand seventy-six dollars.
Yeah, I think it's the term.
Not appropriate and.
And then Mr. Metters, I have a question for you. The two point seven billion for the new Granger Highway Garage, keep the bond issue as small as possible. How do you know how much that bond issue will then be? Or is that?
Department of Construction planning grows off some stuff.
What we're looking at is about two and a half million for phase one and two and a half million for phase two. Yeah.
Yeah, I remember the numbers, that about three million on that bond issue.
Answer to out in summary on the second page on that, Liberty Township invert seat facility addition. I thought when we passed that, it was for Liberty Township to buy a fire from this edition.
Now it's fire truck, we changed it. It was fire truck, it's an addition, I'm sorry.
Changed it? Yeah.
Not accounting maybe, didn't.
We did.
We did.
Apparently, because you pointed out, Mark, that they already had the fire from.
Yeah, that's what the invoices have been for.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
Questions, motion, bill number. Four B. Second, some favor. Big second, Thomas on the favor.
I, I would oppose.
Number forty-seven dash. Forty-seven dash twenty-four C appropriation of fifty thousand dollars apartment.
I I can do it. That's the point, okay.
Yeah.
Um, and what Richard would like to do is it's it looks like a budget transfer, but it's actually a reduction in budget in one fund. And it's an additional appropriation in the other fund. They're put together, sometimes that's an easy way to kind of follow it. So we're reducing the budget in the cumulative capital development fund by fifty thousand. And we're increasing the budget in the general fund by fifty thousand. And it's going to pay for least least equipment. And so it's in a principal and interest account rather than a capital. So it's kind of like a transfer, but it's really a reduction of one fund's budget and increase in the other fund budget.
These are both of the four favorites.
Second.
Send very well, but and right second, pass all in favor.
I, I.
Suppose, I said, four C goes into favor of recommendation. Forty-seven dash twenty-four D appropriation of one hundred and ten thousand two hundred and sixty dollars.
Uh, Chief Deputy Elections, I'm speaking for Amy Roffis today. Um, can I skip to the twenty eight, twenty-four because G, F, and E all go together? Or do you want me to do G first?
I think this is the first one of them. The next one is the combination.
So D is the grant that we received from the Secretary of State. And so that is for a hundred and ten thousand two hundred and sixty. And so in the budget, we broke it down by two different line items, and that's for technology, innovations, and office equipment.
Motion to move favor. Second. Second, I'm Mr. Thomas, second, Mr. Fig, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, forty-seven, that's going to work, he's pencil with a favorable recommendation. So you want to take the next four together? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, cause twenty-four or twenty-eight, twenty-four is the actual, the main one.
So bill number twenty-seven, that's twenty-four G, G.
Correct.
Appropriation of forty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
That is the twenty-three Harvard College pool worker grant. So that is broke down by three different line codes, one for the two part-time employees and which then E and F. We had to match them ten percent. So the E and F is our ten percent to match to make the total grant forty-five to eight seventy-five. Cause we were only awarded forty-one. But it was a total of forty-one something, but we matched it ten percent. So that we could, we would grant us the amount.
So we were.
Full first office. So I transferred money from the perpetuation fund for computer operator into the part-time budget for the Harvard grant. And I did the same thing out of the perpetuation fund for office supplies to the Harvard grant as well. So that we could match both those line items for the total of four thousand one hundred and seventy, our ten percent of the grant that was awarded to us.
How many part-time colleges does it afford?
So there's two positions actually that one is work the vote and that's a program coordinator. And they're the ones who are directly dealing with the colleges and recruiting the vote center workers or poll workers. The other part-time is a program coordinator for work the vote interns. We're getting interns in that we've partnered with I U S B. And we're working with another couple of colleges, but they will earn credit, college credit. So that they can come help us work the polls and get interns in and learn the process of sitting through election boards, on training, working the elections, it would all go to their political science degree. So those are the two, and these are like, one is they're both like thirteen weeks in the primary and then there's a break, there's nothing. And then in the fall, it's like twelve weeks. So this is only a two-year grant, but we're using it this year because obviously next year we don't have an election. So. Um, we're trying to get the job posting on the website, but it's kind of tricky because we don't want to go through easy hire. Because we don't want them to think that they are a county employee because they technically are not. It would be a part-time and we want it to go to go to Amy so Amy can vet them initially. And this is nonpartisan, so we have whoever, I mean, there are some people that are reaching out, but I don't have any of that information.
So. Mr. Mr. Gillian, this won't be giving you ideas.
I, they have people that are interested, absolutely.
Wouldn't that be partisan though?
Well, the people that are doing the job have to be nonpartisan. I mean, I mean, if they're recommending people.
People have to swear nonpartisan status.
They will go, anything that the college program coordinator, you know, gets as far as anybody that's wanting, they will direct them to the party chairs. Um, but they're responsible to try to get people, you know, also to register vote and get a list of people so that they can pass it on to the party chairs as well.
They have motion. Motion to be favorable, and it's Thomas, second, if I missed that, so those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, bill number twenty-four, twenty-seven dash twenty-four G moves to the council with a favorable recommendation, Mr. President.
Mr. Shetland, that's up to the committee hearing and trying to protect you. Bill number twenty-seven point four H appropriation one, knowing five hundred seventy-five thousand apartment services for IPG.
That matters department, structure planning and growth. Uh, what this item is, is this is money that was set aside last year for the repairs at the construction of the repairs and the design of the new Carlyle garage. Uh, I did not get this encumbered last year, so it will carry over this year. So what this is, is a reappropriation so that I can enter that to take care of those repairs. Just in the hustle at the end of the year, God knows.
Any questions for, for the members?
Has the Shetland, thank you. Has the delay, we need repairs, any action, any at this point, or do you think still can do the same?
Uh, the bids are still the same as what they came in last year. Yeah.
Have a motion, bill number twenty-seven, twenty-four H. Second. I have a motion, most through group, second one by Mr. Tanner. All in favor? Aye, aye. All opposed? Number forty-seven, twenty-four H. That's is. Number twenty-four, twenty-seven, twenty-four I appropriation, clear fourteen thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars department. Zero, 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 two IPG. Mr. Shetland.
Shelly Economic Development, uh, this is three hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. This is money, we had two asks of the Healthwind account last year, a hundred and sixty thousand, a hundred and eighty-five thousand. Those covered three projects, the Riverside Campus Master Planning and Survey Work, the Laurel Trail Project and Northern Edge. Uh, much similar to Skies, uh, uh, some of the projects didn't get PO'd at the end of the year, should have been PO'd. The Northern Edge project is just now moving, we anticipated to move last year, hadn't moved yet, will move this year. So what we'd ask is that you reappropriate, uh, three hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars so that we can spend those funds this year.
Any questions? Mr. Shetland.
Same question as I had for Sky, same answer, I assume.
Yeah, so I I would tell you that the Riverside Campus and Laurel Trail Project are both under contract right now. And so we have outstanding bills that we're just waiting to pay until the money gets appropriated. The Northern Edge hadn't allocated up services yet, so engineering, legal, so those will fall within a hundred thousand dollars allocated that.
That motion on bill number forty-seven. That's point four, I.
Motion is unfavorable.
Motion is set favorable, favorable by Council of the Great, second by Councilman Tanner, on paper, I oppose. The forty-seven, twenty-four I asks. I'm all done, sorry. That's up as the Human Therapeutic Systemal Adjustment Committee, Chairman woman great.
Thank you, Mr. Root. Bill number twenty-seven, twenty-four J appropriation of thirty-five thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven Circuit Court.
Hi, can you hear me? Hello?
Can you hear you?
Okay. Hi, this is Emily Stuke. I'm the Circuit Court Administrator. Sorry, I can't be there tonight. Um, I've got offices located on the second floor of Courthouse One. Uh, it should actually be forty thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars. We received a grant from the Indiana Supreme Court to add digital displays to the courthouses, courthouse one, two, three, and the Mishawaka courthouse. Uh, the grant was for innovative technologies. This will have the litigants' names on it with their courtrooms, the date or the time of the hearings. Uh, it's similar to what you would see at an airport, those displays. Um, this will help reduce lines at the door because officers currently have to check eight different papers to see which courtroom the litigant would have to go into. And we're really like looking forward to getting this started.
Any questions?
I'm just curious, is this grant something you had to compete for? Is this something that all courts can get? Can you tell me a little bit about the grant?
So any, any county can apply for uh, their courthouses to receive innovative technology in some capacity. And then they will, there's a team that determines who gets what and how much.
Thank you.
Other questions?
That's great. Uh, the council men are interested in making amending this to equal the grant amount of forty thousand. You have, I wanted to do that now because you have to advertise them ten days.
It is advertised correctly at forty thousand dollars.
You already have a time of the thousand two eighteen. So you're okay. Wait. Let's do a motion here. Yeah, I mean, this is a motion to increase. Second.
Change to forty thousand underneath the dollars.
One eighty-two.
Sorry, forty thousand one eighty.
Oh, sorry about that. Thank you so much.
Uh, and then another motion to this board.
So move. Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Bill number twenty-seven, twenty-four J with a favorable recommendation. Bill number twenty-seven, twenty-four K and appropriation of twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars pro bay court. Right, so subject with proven source of health assistance again. Uh, this is the family recovery work grant. We are running a drug. Starting up a drug work program. Um, and this will help provide emergency services for families in need. Questions? All those in favor? Opposed. Bill number twenty-seven, twenty-four K moves forward with a favorable recommendation. Bill number twenty-seven, twenty-four L and appropriation of seventy-five thousand pro bay court. Okay, this is about the grant that we run through real services, uh, is also run a guardian shift program for adults.
I think it's on a contract.
It is. All in favor?
Uh, exposed.
Bill number twenty-seven, twenty-four L moves forward with a favorable recommendation. Bill number twenty-seven, twenty-four M and appropriation of ten thousand dollars for the pro bay court. Okay, this is the discretionary grant that we're getting from DOC. And it's, it's kind of a whole program for the kids in the community corrections. It's a program where they can learn different skills. Um, so it's like I had said, in a computer program. On this. I'm Mr. Shetland.
So again, kind of like the other grant, is this a grant that all county probate courts can get? Says discretionary grants.
Yeah, it's more, um, it's from Department of Corrections, so it's not the points, it's like community corrections. Like Dukeham Center, those kinds of facilities, but not the court cell. Part. Yes. Indeed. Yeah. I opposed. Bill number twenty-seven, twenty-four M moves forward with a favorable recommendation. Bill number twenty-seven, twenty-four N and appropriation of ten thousand ninety-three dollars and three cents. Leftover grant funds from our capacity grants from last year, so we're just reappropriating them this year to use for contractual. To use up last year's funds. Questions on us? Mr. Shetland.
What does, what does the term contractual support staff mean?
We have for past, we have people that go to court to support the case. So we have our normal staff that are on sale or in the window of contractual. So that's right, they visit the kids, they go to court with them. Yeah, so they have about eight, eight, eight cases. That they, every month.
Yes.
A motion on bill number twenty-seven. All in favor? Opposed. Bill number twenty-seven, twenty-four N moves forward with a favorable recommendation. Bill number twenty-seven, twenty-four O budget reduction seventy-one thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars pro bay court. This is a reduction because we did not, excuse me, it's a capacity grant.
You know, I just say, okay, and then the question.
Any other questions? Okay, a motion? Favor? Opposed. Bill number twenty-seven, twenty-four O moves forward favorable recommendation. Okay, bill number twenty-nine, twenty-four salary amendment, uh, private appropriation of five thousand one hundred. Okay, bill number twenty nine, twenty four salary amendment, uh, private appropriation of five thousand, one hundred and eighty nine dollars for the probate court. Okay, so this one, I'm sorry, this one's my fault, I apologize. So these salaries were supported and they were what we talked about in the budget meeting, and they were on the budgets during all discussions. And I think when the, some changes were made, maybe when we added the five percent. I'm not sure when, but these numbers were changed and I didn't catch it. But there's no additional money because this additional money is already in the transfer that I do with John every year to support all the extra. So the idea is including in that.
Can you explain that?
Mr. President.
I'm not sure I understand the transcript, you explain the process.
Yeah, so we have the rental fund where we bring in a lot of money from our tenants. And the different things that the judge has done, we do a transfer from the eleven eighty two rental fund to the County General Fund to support, for example, the kinds of things.
House members, one other thing we did last year, we moved the JJC from the General Fund to the Lit Fund. So that could have been a source of error, so we could have, our office could have, I could have made the error, it's hard to say. The chair was trying to correct.
Not true when it happens, but I could have thought.
A lot of change, we had to pick some departments to move out of the General Fund because they couldn't support with all the health insurance and liability insurance coming into the General Fund, so we moved. That's the center over there. You know, they did a good job of getting everything organized, but just could have fallen through the cracks.
So you're saying the errors were because of something you may have done, impossible, you're fixing it by moving money from where to where?
I just need to appropriate the salary correctly, the money is already there in the transfer. So the money is already there, it's just in the budget book, the salary is incorrect, so I'm correcting the salary. I'm correcting the salary and then.
Damn that, correct. We're not spending it.
We're not.
Say you have programs that.
Yeah, the tenants are, um, safe passage and the pall that are there.
Yeah.
Yeah, motion? Set favorably?
Second.
Bill number twenty nine, oh, sorry, all of the favor? Opposed. Twenty nine, twenty four combined with bill number twenty seven, twenty four P moves forward with favorable. For twenty seven, twenty four Q and appropriation of seventy one thousand, sorry, I'm sorry, seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy one dollars, sixty cents, Health Department.
Hi, yes, this is Amy Rupee, Administrator with the Department of Health, offices on the eighth and ninth floor of the County City Building. And we would like to appropriate the fund balance for this fund. Uh, the revenue was generated from sponsorship and registration fees for an event that was held in two thousand and twenty two. In the past, funds were used for health cafes in our community, which we had a total of thirty five women attend. We are requesting for the fund balance to be appropriated to address some of the post cafe programming that were identified at these cafes. And one of the main themes brought up was postpartum support and information. Uh, a possibility is we would like to develop a postpartum support group or something similar using, using these funds.
Are there any questions on this? Yes, Mr. Shessel?
Just from my own education, this is, so a postpartum support group is supporting women as they go through the psychological or the, uh, social, the mental issues that come, uh, during that period after having a baby, correct?
Uh, oh, go, I'm sorry, Robin, go ahead. Uh, Robin Vita, Director of Health Outreach Promotion Education, um, with the Department of Health. Um, so the thought around the postpartum support group really would be wrapping around women postpartum. Yes, potentially for mental health support, so connecting them to resources and services if that's a need that's identified. Um, but really what we identified through the cafes were women needed a, a space to, um, ask questions, um, about all sorts of things, um, whether it be their first baby, their second baby, their fifth baby, around, um, things that maybe were, were normal, but they thought were abnormal, um, those types of things. So it'd be supports, yes, for the, the mental health, the, the mental health piece, but also some of the social service piece. Um, some of it's access to care, um, we do have women who see a physician, um, throughout their pregnancy. And then once they are, um, no longer pregnant, they are in, they need to find a new healthcare provider. Um, and they at times, um, need additional support with that. Um, what we found was the six week postpartum visit offered by pretty much every OB in, in the area. Um, needed to be sooner, like they needed support more like two weeks postpartum. Um, so this would be a network of, of that support and ability to connect women, um, in our county who'd need that additional support. And the funds would potentially support, um, if we were doing these in-person support groups, um, it might be some sort of, um, appropriate incentive. Think, may, maybe we've had a, a big ask for a first aid and safety, um, type things. Um, through a past grant, we were able to, um, offer, um, purchased car seats and bedside sleepers for our Women's Care Center clients. So, um, it's a small amount of money, but we think we could stretch it in a, in a way that would be meaningful to the moms who are asking and looking for that type of support in our community.
How would you know which moms need the support?
The, so we would use community partners to offer the support to anybody, so really it'd be women who would, um, who would become aware of the program and they would, they would, they would come voluntarily, so it'd be open to anybody and everybody. We would use our community partners to get the word out about that availability.
Clinics, doctors' offices, those be the community partners?
Exactly, yep, yep, WIC Clinic, um, and some of our, our, um, other family-based programs that we work with, they would all be made aware of, of this, of this opportunity.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Motion in favor.
All those in favor? Opposed. Bill number twenty seven, twenty four Q moves forward with a favorable recommendation. Next bill, Health Department, twenty seven, twenty four R and appropriation of fifty one thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars, sixty nine cents.
This Natjo Mentor Program Grant was a deliverable-based grant. However, we still have funds available to utilize. Um, we are requesting to use the funds to purchase office supplies, stipends to eighteen of our community partners to help them become actively engaged in the substance use prevention activities. Um, travel for staff to go to conferences and trainings related to substance use disorders, as well as the purchase of naloxone boxes and fentanyl strips.
What are fentanyl strips? Opposed.
Just I heard the question correctly, you asked what are fentanyl test strips, correct, Ms. Drake?
What are the fentanyl test strips? I didn't know, is that right, so you're testing for levels of fentanyl? So what?
We are actually, the test strip tests just for the presence of fentanyl, um, in, in, um, substances. Since we, we do see that fentanyl, the presence of fentanyl is, um, there in over eighty percent of all of our overdose deaths. Um, and yes, this is a harm reduction tool that would identify in somebody's supply if a, um, if their supply had fentanyl in it.
What do you do when that happens?
So we've worked with the Five Two Five Foundation, um, maybe two years ago to, um, expand their, um, permanent pill drop boxes. And along with that, uh, grant provided, um, access to disposable drug pouches. So in the event we, um, an individual would identify fentanyl is in their substance and they want to get rid of it, they would put it immediately into one of these small pouches that basically eats the drug and makes it nonusable. Um, we have hundreds of these pouches, um, that we've been working with other community providers on. Um, but that is our thought is somebody identifies for fentanyl, um, so there's two things, one, we can destroy it, to destroy it through the, the pill, or excuse me, the drug pouches, um, or, um, educate on safer use strategies, um, which falls in line with a harm reduction, uh, program.
So you're not necessarily telling people, no, on fentanyl, you're telling them safer ways to use fentanyl?
We're saying that in the event an individual would utilize a fentanyl test strip and identify fentanyl in their substance, that that substance potentially could kill them. And we offer them the tools to not use that supply, which is the, um, pill or the permanent, or, oh my gosh, I'm so sorry, it's been such a long day. The, um, they would use the disposable drug pouches, um, and I can't require somebody not to use a substance. Um, but, but that would be it, and the fentanyl test strips would be distributed through, uh, community partners that we've worked with, um, really for last several years on addressing, um, overdose death, um, and, uh, fatality.
Yeah, how, how often are people willing to hand over the fentanyl to get destroyed?
Yeah, you know what, that's a phenomenal question. Um, and one thing we, um, lack in our community is the ability to do, uh, more comprehensive drug testing or drug checking is what they call it. Um, the University of Notre Dame is actually working on a project in their chemistry department to identify, um, a more comprehensive test strip, um, and what we've, why I'm mentioning this is because they've, um, looked at that exact question is how willing is somebody to hand over their substance? Um, because we, I, I really, I don't know, I have my own, my own thoughts, um, but, but based, I, I can't really speak based on, on research yet because this whole drug checking, um, test strip whole thing is, is really still new. Um, but we know that the majority of our overdose deaths, fentanyl is present in the substance that person has, has used. And it's a, a way for us to, um, hopefully decrease the number of people that die from overdose. Whether that be a chronic user or a recreational user.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions? Mr. Shessel?
Is this the same grant, um, that was used for the Narcan boxes last year?
Yes, Mr. Shessel, I, I knew you were going to ask me that, yes, this Narcan Box Grant, while we met the deliverables in the timeframe in which we had to, um, with leadership changes and just, you know, getting the, the Department of Health back up in, in, in a space, um, we were, um, able to get quotes and, and those types of things for the, the boxes. And we actually were able to look at funds, um, to purchase more, um, boxes, which means more access throughout the county to, to naloxone. Um, but yes, this is, and Amy and I have talked a lot about this and, and our timeline for spending this down is, is actually like, once appropriated and, and if appropriated and approved, it will be within a, a matter of weeks to get these boxes up and running. We have organizations waiting for them, so, but yes, it is the same grant.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Motion in favorably?
Aye.
Opposed. Bill number twenty seven, twenty four R moves forward with favorable recommendation. Um, bill number thirty twenty four salary amendment combined with an appropriation. Bill number twenty seven, twenty four S appropriation of three hundred and fifty eight dollars, but three hundred and fifty eight thousand, five hundred and eighty three dollars, ten cents, Health Department.
And this grant, we have received, um, the prior year cycle. And we did receive a performance award extension from the State Department of Health for this grant that focuses their work on pregnant women to reduce infant mortality. The appropriation includes the original grant award amount plus carry forward from the previous grant cycle that is being allowed by the State Department of Health. That is the total of the three hundred and fifty eight thousand, five hundred and eighty three dollars and ten cents. Excuse me, after this funding does exhaust, the program will move to HFI funding to continue the, um, payment of personnel and benefits as well as programming for the pro, programming cost for the program.
Any questions? Or a motion?
Motion in favor.
All those in favor? Opposed. Bill number thirty twenty four combined with bill number twenty seven, we're asked forward with a favorable. Next, bill number thirty one, twenty four, a salary amendment, Health Department. Uh, all combined with bill number twenty seven, twenty fourteen appropriation of three hundred and eighty six thousand, nine hundred and ninety eight dollars, seventy five cents.
And this is a request to appropriate the fund balance of our countywide lead initiative. That fund is used to deploy four community health workers into our community. Those community health workers focus their work on educating and testing the community for lead poisoning. Um, the funds will also be used to purchase supplies and equipment for our lead risk assessor, who is in need of a new lead paint analyzer. Um, again, once this fund is exhausted, the program will move to HFI funding.
Questions? Mr. Shessel?
So before I became a county councilman, once I might hear in the news about, but poisoning the children, and we're spending quite a bit of money here, spent quite a bit of money. So do we see any improvements in, um, in our ratios in the numbers we're looking at?
Uh, unfortunately, I don't have that information, but I'll be glad to get that and be able to send that to you from our data analyst as well as Renata, who is the Director of the Care Unit that does oversee the lead program. So I apologize, I don't have that information, but I can surely get that and send that to you.
You, you tell me how we're measuring our test with this month.
Yeah, that would, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Robin. Okay, Amy, let me, let me see if I can try to address some of this, um, and, um, so in, in to the, what we have been able to do with this fund and the, the community health workers, um, has been to increase lead testing, which is huge, right? Identifying kids who have that elevated blood level, so mitigation strategies can begin, right? Um, and even more importantly, if, um, a child is, is tested and, um, children in the home, uh, there's other children in the home who are at risk, we, we can identify that as well. Um, our lead CHWs utilize our Red Cap system for program, uh, monitoring and outcome reporting. Um, so we would be able to, to pull numbers that, um, would be relatively specific to just the work of our lead CHWs. Um, we've gained a lot of traction with e-education and awareness, um, and the hesitation at times it takes for a family whom, um, um maybe gets a a does a finger stick, right? And they um we do a finger stick blood blood test and then they need a confirmatory blood test to say, yes, this there was no hu- human error here, but this this level really is elevated. Um we've made a lot of progress in completing those confirmation lead screenings, which is extremely important um for us to then enter that individual into to case management and begin working with the family to um lower that child's blood level, but then also mitigate any risk in the home. Um and mitigating risks in the home um do come from support with some of the the city of South Bend has received um some money to to help with with that mitigation. Um so yes, we utilize Red Cap literally for most reporting things at the Department of Health and can pull those reports. Um but just sitting in a lead meeting this past Friday, we have increased the number of kids that are being screened and then those confirmation tests being completed, um which is extremely important. And um more and more community partner capacity in assuring families that if blood is identified, there are ways that we can help support them, get through that um that isn't just moving their house or something like that. I I hope that's helpful.
It is, but I I wonder where do when do you get to a point with the increased screening and testing where you have a resulting metric you can start to analyze to see how effective this money being spent is. In other words, some metric that we point at, say, with this is what we want to drive down. When do we get to that point? Cause it doesn't sound like we're there.
Yeah, you're you're correct, and that's a very, very good question. Um and I will not speak for Renata, um but but just speaking, I think in a as a public health um individual, when we have the risk for lead by census tracts goes down um and that is monitored through the State Department of Health. Um and as we see those risks for lead poisoning um decrease, right? So some of our census tracts are bright bright red. Those kids have the most the highest risk of coming in, living in a home that has elevated blood lead levels um or excuse me, has um the most potential for exposure to lead based paint or lead based soil. Um but it would be from a from a process point, looking at those, the the risk for lead poisoning goes down. And those maps, as I mentioned, are are based um at a census level produced for us by the State Department of Health.
So could you share some of that State Department of Health data? Who else is interested? I am interested. Maybe share all of us and whoever's interested can say.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, Robin, Robin Raphael.
Yep.
Uh so it's safe to say that the increase in working with the different community partners and also the increase in the outreach workers that has really led to some of these numbers increasing as far as at least the testing and going into the census tracts with the highest level of uh possibility of lead.
One hundred percent, one hundred percent.
Okay, and is it all is it also safe to say, and I agree with with Mr. Shetzel's concerns, I really do, we've talked about this for more than several years now, and I'm assuming that that problem was that was really uh in my mind, a reason for low numbers is the uh resistance of some of the families to even let you come in.
Yes.
And that's and that is getting that is you're working with that and that problem is decreasing?
Yes, that is getting better. That hesitation is getting better because of the community health worker nature is to create those relationships and trust. And we're able to then follow through.
Very tough to do in a lot of cases.
I said that again.
I said, I'm just making a statement that identifying that truck or creating that trust can be very hard to accomplish in a lot of cases.
Mm hmm. Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All those in favor? Host. Bill number thirty one twenty four combined with bill number twenty seven twenty four to be moved forward with a favorable recommendation. And now we have bill number twenty twenty four, doing local oversight and control concerning the prohibition of ultimate fighting. Petitioner Brian Tanner and Mark Tansrey.
Uh just a really quick overview, some of the you that found and questions about this. Uh there is nothing that explicitly go this to anybody's attention or I need to address this uh in researching some uh activity or item that was on our agenda back in December. Uh one keyword search uh within our county code led me to this existence uh or this ordinance's existence as established in nineteen ninety nine uh. I guess if you want to call me a fan, uh I'm aware that events have happened in our county for the last fourteen years or so um that were along the lines of what you would maybe phrase as ultimate fighting. Uh which more commonly referred to now as mixed martial arts. It is a highly regulated um licensed activity in the state of Indiana as of two thousand nine. I think that's why it was up in the radar. Nobody really thought anything of it, um although the county ordinance existed. Uh events that I'm aware of at least didn't start occurring until after the state passed law supporting and structuring this in two thousand nine. Uh so there was never any enforcement of the ordinance that was passed in nineteen ninety nine. Um and I I quite frankly don't rely too enforcing body uh for that. Uh I actually I don't, I it might have been Health Department, it might have been Health Enforcement, I'm not entirely sure uh who who would uh functionally shut this down aside, maybe blog endorsement or forcibly shutting it down. Uh but again, it was never on anybody's radar for the last fourteen fifteen years. So in my opinion, this is truly just clean up to fly line with state law. But I I love the questions.
So uh I really never heard of this in our county, so is there any location or that they're doing this right now?
So I am aware now of an event that's coming up at the Century Center at the end of March. Uh but that's it's not a first. Uh this uh Michigan Fight League MFL has put on uh over fifty events over the last fourteen fifteen years. Um they've done events at Century Center quite commonly, or even at Four Run Field. Uh so it's it's a known quantifiable thing in our community. It's just not necessarily a commonly known thing in our community because it's got a a segment of the faith base that follows uh UFC uh. Uh one of the facts, looking into it, once people started asking questions about it uh that I came across is actually one of the international champions for World One FC uh fight promotion uh came out of this Michigan Fight League some twelve years ago. Um so there's an individual at the international level recognition uh for even at starting out. Uh but again, I as far as I'm aware, the one provision that exists here uh has is regular.
What was that inactive? What was that inactive? That was inactive?
Yeah, it actually is called the nineteen ninety nine prohibition on ultimate fight or the prohibition of ultimate fighting. Like they established here in the passage of uh but the state law and uh regulation of it began in your state. A gentleman from WNTU, Martin Peterson, I believe, who reached out to me indicated that he's one of the uh local media reporters who's around when it was passed. But he's still around today, so uh a few people still remember it.
Now, I remember there was a problem with the events out at Mission Walker at the FOP. But that was that was fake wrestling.
Okay, okay, yeah.
And that I think that was more of an insurance for lack of.
Yeah, I'm unaware of those, but that's big.
That's my opinion. Okay.
And I think it's fair to say that.
Regulated.
Right, it it's fair to say that in the in the early nineties that it wasn't regulated. There were, there was no sanctuary bodies, there were no state uh regulations. There was no time limits, no hold tomorrow type events that necessarily reflect the highly skilled activities. Again, it's from my point of view, it's less about trying to make a point with this as much as it is just cleaning up our work. So aligning with state laws.
That it?
Thank you.
Our motion on bill number twenty twenty? All those favored? Host. The bill number twenty twenty four moves forward with a favorable recommendation.
Let's take a two minute recess here. Jen, do you wanna?
Did the uh salary amendment? Yeah, that I forgot to ask for it to be retroactive beginning of the year.
Mr. Murphy confirmed that that's the proper, it is proper.
It was in the but if it had been in the budget book, it would have been affected. Bill twenty nine and twenty four.
So we're making a motion to do what? Make the retroactive from the beginning of the year. Is there a motion to make this retroactive?
I'll make that.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, so the bill number twenty nine twenty four, we I don't know, maybe amendments, big red red.
And want to see, I think most of them came in, but you want to go see if there's somebody. We'll take a quick two minute recap to make sure nobody else is out in the foyer. Verbal lands use portion.
Oh, we can unmute her. Okay, three parcels of land um off the corner of Jefferson Boulevard and Buckeye Road in Mishwaka, oh, forgot to say um Ariel three area, which is staff. Office on the left floor, uh staff has been working with the petitioner, correct a number of conformance issues on the property and these rezonings are really just how bring these properties into conformance. The property right at the corner contains an auto repair shop, zone C commercial, final site plan. The rezoning would eliminate the final site plan there. The property to the rear of that is currently zoned business, um they want to zone that commercial as well for use by the repair shop, finally, the parcel that was. Is own business, um there's a single-family home there and it would be redone to our single-family district to match what's there. Most of the surrounding area is residential with the exception of the auto repair shop. Um, the aerial shows, this aerial shows the three lots. If approved, they would need to combine these or follow these rezonings up with a minor subdivision, the committee um. Clean up property lines and combine the lots out. Hello, for the repair shop. This is the single-family home on site, records show that the property has been used since the nineteen twenties. This is the auto repair shop right at the corner, it's been here in its current state since the seventies, um but there was a repair shop in operation even previous to that. Most of the resident residential development in this area um was developed afterward largely in the nineteen eighties. This is the interior lot line, you can kind of see the garage in the back there, it's currently built on the lot line, that's where the adjustment of the property lines would be done later on. Here is looking west down Jefferson. And east. This is the intersection. And the shop from another angle. This is the back area behind the repair shop, one thing you've probably noticed is that there's a number of cars parked. Haphazardly on this lot and along the sides of the main building, you're proposing a number of improvements on the lot that will help correct this. They're um proposing to pave this area along with the back lot in general and add a more clear entrance such that the lot can accommodate uh those cars waiting for repair. This becomes more clear on the site plan and you can see the improvements at all. Uh, the area plan commission approved a number of variances to allow for these improvements constructed. No changes are proposed to the actual buildings. The area plan commission forwarded these petitions with a unanimous favorable recommendation, during the hearing, we did have one person speak in favor. Who was executor of one of the trusts that owns one of the lots, she stated that they're looking to sell the shop, so they're motivated to get everything up to code. We did also receive one letter of support that was discussed at the meeting, it was sent from an abutting property owner to the north. Staff does find it meets all state law criteria, the most desirable use of the property is to bring the current longstanding use into compliance. Improvements would improve and conserve the value of the existing area and would support responsible growth and development. All of this is just part of a larger effort, staff has been working with the petitioner on to clean up the lots and I'm happy to answer any questions.
It's the petitioner here.
Charlie from the Whitman office, address fourteen oh two Mishwaka Avenue. Um, I've been working very closely with the staff, the staff presentation sums up my part of it, uh give you just a little quick background on this, Mr. Erickson. Then the grandfather owned this forty acres, built a house in nineteen twenty eight. A few years later, he built the auto repair shop nineteen twenty nine. In sixty six, he built this garage, he owned the whole area. It was divided off by deed. With disregards to where the building was located. Creating the problem that we have. Moving fast forward, three generations, hundred years later. Grandkids wanna sell the auto repaired garage, the property behind it to go along with it, we have to rectify the encroaching garage. All of the variances that the planning commission presented are what's necessary to gerrymander the property line around the garage. In gerrymandering the property line, we've got to gerrymander all the zoning lines also, that's why we're here before you folks. It's all motivated because hundred years later, grandkids wanna sell. And that's basically my presentation and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any question? Charlie, um, the green portion, is that, what does that propose to be rezoned to?
This is being proposed to be the new parking area for the garage.
That will be C commercial as well.
It will be C commercial also, and when you saw the picture with the cars parked all over haphazardly back there. Our proposed plan is to have that area with paved lot organized for people to pull in and out once a vehicle is either dropped off or being picked up after service. See that right here.
How would you do with, um, how much you guys worked screening on the door for the resident property?
Uh, we've talked with the neighbors to the north up there, um, the uh neighbors to the north have asked if we would provide an easement, there was a. An agreement between grandpa and them. To be able to access a whole building that they have behind their property, they said that they would not require any landscaping as long as we could get an easement. And we've agreed to give them that easement for access back there to their whole building in the back.
Thank you. Wonderful. Question I have a most.
Make the motion, we send bills two twenty four, three twenty four. And the four twenty four.
It's a doubtful with a favorable.
Second all three bills.
We have a a motion to the favorable and a second, always a fair say I.
Alright.
Close, motion passed.
Thank you.
Next, bill number five dash twenty four, resign for property located five six three five five, that open C commercial. Are united steel workers of America.
Alright, sorry, all three again, uh this petition is to remove a final site plan that restricts a property for use as a local union meeting hall. The property is in Osceola near the Alcar county line, a church is hoping to construct a new building for their congregation on the north portion of the property. And the removal of the final site plan would permit them to do so. It's currently zoned C commercial, subject to the final site plan. The majority of the properties nearby are zoned are single-family for use as single-family dwellings. There are some other mixed uses, including some properties zoned B business nearby. I believe the current building for the church that is petitioning to move in here is on one of their residential properties to the west of Lehman Street. Um, here is the current. The current, the current site with the union hall. Uh, yep, and the final site plan for the property was approved in nineteen ninety seven and only allows for the union hall, a small storage shed and parking spaces. This is looking uh along Ash. This is looking east across the street into El Carte. The wooded area in this picture is where they propose to construct a church. And here is one more view. The site plan is showing the new proposed church building, um Ash Road is on the bottom there, the actual church building will be set back over eighty feet from Ash Road. They also show parking areas and some landscaping they would need to add. If the rezoning is approved, they would have to divide the lot, um and some of the details of road improvements and utility service will be worked out when the law is divided. Um, staff finds the petition meets the state law criteria as outlined, at the APC's public hearing, we did have two members of the congregation. Speak in favor of petition stating that the current church is basically at capacity and would benefit from expansion. The APC forwards it to you with a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Can you say my name? I'm the pastor, the church on that street, and we are, she said we're at capacity. So they, what's the union all they've offered to sell us? All of our unused land, which is on. Ash Road, so we're just hoping that we can just that.
Like, any questions? Pastor. What's the closest east-west?
East-west is, uh Lehman is right there. Lehman is where our church is now, you see our church right there, just, yes.
Okay, I see. So that's district.
John. From seed commercial to seed commercial, is that because of the ownership change?
It's because there's a final site plan attached to it, uh so you couldn't do anything more with the property with the final site plan, so this is just to remove that.
Any other questions? Motion. Their motion is second, always the fair say I.
Alright.
Close, motion passed. Well, bill number twenty two dash twenty two, twenty four, twenty two dash forty, we feel ordinance number forty two dash twenty three. Do a man expand the I E C overlay district petitioner area plan.
This top line, area plan commission staff, uh so there's really two purposes to this ordinance, the first one is just. Making some slight changes to the existing legal description of the I E C overlay district. This is really cleanup, it doesn't have any material effect on the uh east-west or northern boundaries. Uh, this is the existing overlay district on the screen here. Uh, but the more substantive aspect of the ordinance. Is to extend the overlay to the south across State Road two uh to cover that six hundred and thirty-six acres at the southwest corner of Strawberry and State Road two. Uh, this is in anticipation of a zoning petition, uh which is next on your agenda. To rezone from a agricultural district to I industrial district, uh if this were to go through, to be approved, the rezoning. Staff wants to get the overlay district this extended, um so you cover that property. Such that development of the site would be consistent with the rest of the I E C properties. Um, so by extending the overlay, they would become subject to the use restrictions and uh the heightened landscaping standards. And eventually, when we submit a draft with more um, the broader I E C overlay that had more elements, um that will also apply to all of these properties. There again, in the yellow is what's covered currently, and in the green is where it will be expanded. Once again, this will only apply to industrially zoned properties within the overlay. Uh, it won't have any impact on the agriculturally zoned properties which contain the uh farms and single-family homes in the area. It won't authorize any industrial uses on any properties that are not already zoned industrial. And again, I just touched on with briefly what is in the current overlay, um we do have some, a list of permitted uses, a list for inhibited uses. And then some additional landscaping development standards, we are continuing to work on additional performance standards for the district, uh building design standards. Additional minimum landscaping, mechanical screening requirements and energy and water efficiency uh point system. Uh, but in the meantime, we would like to extend this to the, the property to the south. Um, to ensure that the development is consistent with the rest of the overlay. Uh, this comes to you from the area plan commission, uh seven zero. There were uh five members of the public that spoke in remonstrance, the uh, the common theme there was concerns relating to extending the um I E C beyond the current um. Or development area. Um, other than that, I'm happy to answer your questions.
Come on, um. Part of general voters, will they be going over into that with this full relief, this proposed full relief, that be part of that?
I mean.
No, I know, I know, I was trying to, I think of the spot on that.
In terms of the cloverleaf?
Yeah, is that gonna, that's right, it's a south two, so. Just thinking, is there any of the roads going in over there?
Oh, in terms of going on to the property owned by GM, Bill Shalley has some lines against for that one.
So. Also, we're working with an interchange proposal on the, the intersection of two and Larison, I'm sorry, Bill Shalley, economic development. Intersection of two and Larison, we're still working through intersection design, the northwest quadrant would, would contain a quarter of the intersection improvements on the pride property, so the GM. Section is that, that northwest quadrant. So they would, as part of the development agreement, donate whatever land area we need to, to help support that project. I don't know if that answered, it will be answered your question.
Let's go in there south, some of that would go south of two.
Yes, absolutely, yeah, it, all four quadrants of that intersection will have some level of.
Thank you. Next, bill number twenty three dash twenty four, resigning for profit located three one zero 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 two, some hands, talking to high gun, the petitioner, yes, so bad.
Yes, Chuck fight again, uh area plan staff. Uh, so this is the actual petition to rezone that uh property in the southwest corner of Strawberry Road and two. Um, highlighted on the screen there. Uh, currently on the site is farmland and then the uh Nesbitt Johnny Dish uh passes through southeast corner. Uh, to the north of the site across State Road two, our property is zoned I industrial, um including I E C site one, which is uh the future site of the G battery plant. To the east, our property is zoned A agricultural district, uh most of these um are farmed parcels, but there does appear to be one single-family home, um. Similarly to the south, across the Lang ditch and Gordon Road are agriculturally zoned parcels, mainly agriculturally used, uh but what appears to be one single-family home. And then to the west is the Napster Proving Grounds, zoned I industrial district, and then Bendix Wood County Park, so a agricultural district. Uh, looking at land use trends in the area, um. The six hundred and seventy acre parcel immediately to the west. Uh, was rezoned to allow for the proving ground use in the nineteen sixties after Bendix acquired the property from Suda Baker. Uh, essentially to legalize the uh use, which has since become non-conforming. And then to the north, across State Road twenty three, are properties that were rezoned from A agricultural district to I industrial district, um. Really beginning in the nineteen eighties, but with the majority of them having been rezoned since twenty twenty. Property as it appears today. Just looking south into it for two. To the north across two from the subject property. The uh site plan submitted doesn't show any specific improvements for uses, um however, if the I E C overlay is extended to cover this, uses would be subject to those of. Uh, use prohibitions and creative uses, uh furthermore, it would need to meet the, all the standards of the I industrial district related to minimum setbacks, um. Parking, loading, lighting restrictions and other performance standards. In terms of traffic and transportation, uh the proposal is for there to be a frontage road below the say road two. Which would access the new interchange to be constructed at the intersection of two with uh Strawberry and Larison. Uh, all access to State Road two would of course be subject to in dot approval. Uh, turning to utilities, if the rezoning is successful, uh it would be part of the expanded Indiana Enterprise Center. Uh, therefore, it would be served by Southman Sewer and New Carlisle Water, this would be provided in tandem with the development or um prior to that development. Again, I just wanted to um reiterate the fact that we're continuing to work on a uh more robust I E C overlay district. Uh, in the meantime, county staff, is county planning staff going to continue to work with um economic development staff to. Try to get some of these new standards that we're going to propose, um implemented into development agreements with uh prospective developers uh within the I E C. Turning to the, the uh state law criteria. Uh, we find that it is consistent with a couple of different goals of the two thousand and two comprehensive plan. Uh, including the one that directs the county to ensure that there are suitable areas available for future industrial development. And also goal to objective B, which states that employment usage should be located to minimize impact on residential areas. Uh, and turning to the uh two thousand and two land use plan, it's immediately to the south of land which was designated as an industrial preserve. Uh, furthermore, the site was identified as being suitable for industrial development by the twenty twenty Indiana Enterprise Center Area Management Plan. Uh, given its frontage at State Road two and the opportunity for sewer and water service to the property. Uh, the site is currently a farm field. Most desirable uses are industrial, given the availability of like uh utilities, um highway and railroad connections. And planned industrial development uh throughout the I E C. Turning to conservation of property values, as I mentioned, there are very few residential uses in close proximity to this property. Um, additionally, impact will be mitigated by the heightened standards of the I E C overlay district. Um, furthermore, industrial uses of the property should not adversely impact the value of nearby uh industrial or agriculturally used property. Uh, finally, we find that it is responsible development and growth to allow in additional industrial uses. In an area of planned utility and infrastructure improvement, uh which is already underway to support these future. Uh, this comes to you from the area plan commission with a favorable recommendation six one. Uh, in terms of remonstrance, five spoke at the public hearing, and we did receive one letter, um. Common concerns um were that it was outside of the current core development area. And a desire for the completion of a comprehensive plan in the I E C overlay and also potential water usage of any industrial development on that site. Um, other than that, I'm happy to answer your questions.
Good evening, Bill Shalley, Economic Development Director, I'm here representing the Sebastian family on this rezoning tonight. Uh, again, as Sean mentioned, we're looking to rezone six hundred and forty acres in the southwest intersection of State Burn two and. Uh, Strawberry Road or we're basically Larison extended, uh from ag to industrial. Uh, your action that you took before this would add the overlay characteristics to this rezoning, so there's not a need to add written commitments or anything uh to a rezoning at this time because of. Uh, the uses contained within the overlay, and so we find that very supportive. Uh, this property owner is, is seeking to rezone the land now in anticipation of future development opportunities, there are a couple of prospects that are interested in the site and interested in the area. The rezoning will be contingent on moving those projects forward, so if there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Any question?
For a four dash twenty-four, he's going to property located at five 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 four zero Apple Road. From C commercial to C commercial petitioner, broke property investments, L L C.
Sorry, I'll try to read, sorry, thank you, Mr. Staff. We have another petition for removal of a final site plan for a lot zone C commercial. At the southeast corner of Apple Road and McKinley Highway. So the final site plan associated with the property has undergone a few iterations. Originally, the final site plan was added in nineteen ninety-six for basketball camp. It was then modified for a church, so this is the one that applies, which is from two thousand and three. The petitioner would like to remove this final site plan to build a fence and accept three buildings for a new, for a new proposed use at for their. Electrical contractor business. This is a current property with the existing building. This is the front along McKinley. This is the rear of the property, um, they're proposing to add a shed here for equipment. This is looking across the street to Apple Road Residential Properties. And this is um, across the street directly north, looking at McKinley. This portion of the McKinley Highway corridor contains a mix of commercial uses. And while some residential uses exist, it does appear to be trending commercial, especially east of Apple Road. Um, this is a site plan the property owner has provided. Showing the proposed changes none to the building, but they will add that shed and the fence. One variance was approved to allow for a larger chain link security fence, um, those types of fences are common in the area. Staff does find the petition meets the state law criteria. It is in line with the transitioning nature of McKinley Highway corridor. And the removal of the final site plan would allow for flexibility and optimal developments in accordance with existing development standards for the C district. The A P C forwards this um, to you with unanimous favorable recommendation.
Any question, petitioner or? Question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Rose, is this indicative of, you, you started your business, uh, a few years ago, maybe half a year ago? Okay, and this is indicative of the growth that you've experienced and expansion of your team?
Yeah, I basically started in the basement of my home. And. We grew and this came up for sale as a church. Perfect fit for us. So, yeah. Thank you.
Bill number twenty-five dash twenty-four, but you use for property located at. Five four one six nine Tulip Road, petitioner Miller.
Got fine area plan. So. Uh, so they, they're seeking kind of a uh, broader special use. It's available in the agricultural district, the R single family district. And the C commercial district. And the special use reads to allow mineral and material mining, or calling the sand gravel or other aggregate and the processing thereof. Um, but as you know, from the previous petition, they're really only interested in that processing thereof. Uh, they're not planning any mining or extraction on the property. Uh, they want to use it for a concrete batch plant, which would uh, mix cement aggregates, um. Other materials to create concrete to then ship out to construction sites within the area, um. Again, uh. Very similar to the one you saw before, this is located eighteen hundred feet northwest of that previous site. Unlike that previous site, this does have frontage on uh, U S twenty, um, so. It could be viable in terms that there actually be uh, truck routes that would provide um, access. In terms of the location on the site, uh, they're proposing to locate in. The northwest corner of the parcel, uh, proposing a two hundred foot setback from the north. Uh, two hundred and fifty feet from that western property line, um, over nine hundred feet from the east. And seventeen hundreds be from the south property line. Just the view looking over to the east. Um, where? The majority of the single family homes in the area are located, um, as well as those that are on the other side of the highway. The site plan submitted uh, shows a screening berm. Uh, six foot is proposed to the north in terms of the height of that berm. And then um, four feet to the east and west, um, also there's landscaping proposed to the north. Uh, two evergreens per every thirty feet of lot line, which results in uh, thirty-five there. Uh, likewise to the east provides screening to this eastern, um, homes over there, they're proposing. Uh, two evergreens per thirty feet once again, resulting in fifty-five evergreens in this case. Those are just some views of some other plans operated by this company. Uh, this does come to you with a favorable recommendation, uh, from the area board of zoning appeals. However, that recommendation was subject to the five. Proposed written commitments on your screen, um. The first being that the developers shall adhere to a berm and vegetation screening plan, as you saw, um, that would need to be approved by staff. Uh, secondly, truck traffic related to the special use shall be limited to state routes and county roads designated as truck routes by the county engineer. This slide kind of shows you what that was like. Um, they would have to, they would not have access to tulip, uh, they would have to come out on twenty. Uh, they could then go south on Twilax, uh, west on Edison and that. Uh, south, further south to two using Larison, those are the approved. Uh, county truck routes in that case. Uh, material extraction and mining on site will be prohibited. The concrete plant operation shall comply with all performance standards, um, contained in. The Saint Joseph County zoning ordinance, section one fifty-four oh seven three. The, it would otherwise not be subject to these because these don't apply in the agricultural district even to um, special uses. And then the final one, a renewal of the special use shall be required five years after the initial granting of special. So again, this came to you with a favorable recommendation. You look at the, the criteria. The, with no impact on public comfort. Standards, convenience or general welfare. Uh, the board found that that was the case because the use still had to conform with local state and federal regulations, um, and there were no site extraction. Uh, second criteria, they found that it would not ensure adversely affect the use of adjacent area property values therein. Mainly due to the, the heightened setbacks they're providing, per the zoning ordinance, they are required fifty foot setbacks, but. Again, what they're proposing are far more substantial than those, uh, specifically to the east and. Um, from the north where our residential uses are. Um. They also found it was consistent with the character of the agricultural district. Wherein primary uses often require large amounts of on-site storage, having machinery. Um, resulting in generation of dust, noise, vibration, so similar in that sense. Uh, and they, they found that it was compatible with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. In that it's in close proximity to areas which have been slated for industrial development. And um, allowing a nearby source of concrete will help to facilitate this. Uh, so this came to you with a favorable recommendation, twelve spoke and remonstrance, um. Highlighting some of the concerns that are related to uh, traffic safety on U S twenty, uh, the location of the plant. Dust mitigation, uh, desire for a time limit. And um, a time limit as in when they get the special use renewed and then uh, questions regarding hours of operation. Um, happy to answer any questions?
We can't quite see what the vote was, but it looked like it might have been four to two.
It was four to two, that's correct.
What were the uh, objections of the two members?
Um. Trying to, do you recall how well they elaborated on that? You know, I, I know what the public's concerns were, so I just. It was prompted by those public concerns that way.
Oh, yes, there was Abby Wiles, A P C director, there was um, a question brought to one of, brought uh. By one of the board members about what in that would require. In regards to improvements to the site, what if they would require an X L D cell lane or? For what? And uh, the petitioner's response, and they can speak to this, is that they are going through the rezoning and then. They will do whatever they need to. When it comes to complying with in-depth requirements, but in that would be. The one that has jurisdiction over that.
So in that, you can't get approval until end that, if it's okay, right?
Uh, they would. Need to grant access for the drive onto state road. Twenty. They, they would be, uh, they would have jurisdiction for granting the curb cut or the driveway under twenty.
So. Sorry, um. Why can't I, can you pull up the I E C? Why can't they? Go in the I E C? Because I know what you're gonna say, Abby.
All right, I have some bonus, I have some bonus slides for you, because I thought this might come up.
And because this is, this is a problem that a lot of staff. And the folks I've been talking to. And I don't mind, they're not gonna be mining, I know we talked about that. Um, but. Common sense dictates to me, Smith is already in there. Correct? Grandfather, grandfather, but they're doing the same thing as Kurt's gonna be doing. So. Common says sixty, why don't we put them in the I E C, they're not mining. Just, it seemed, what's the purpose of the I E C to have this, we don't want this industrial sprawl outside. I'm trying to put Jenna's.
Yeah, sure.
But so I, I, I would, I would like to see it inside. I know it can't go in the industrial, um. The, the industrial part of it, I don't believe. Uh, do you have a map of that, or you want to go through this first?
Agricultural areas within the I E C core development area would be exempt from the overlay. So I guess to.
Say that one more time.
The agriculturally zone parcels within. The core development area that are zoned I E C overlay are not subject. Uh, to the overlay as Sean explained earlier. Uh, so I guess to answer your question, whether or not. You agree, I'll give you the rationale, but, uh. So. When Bill referenced a couple petitions ago, um. Hey, it's nice, we have this overlay, it covers everything. We don't need to have written commitments proposed as part of this petition because the I E C overlay covers it. When concerns were brought. Potential uses in the I E C overlay, these seven uses were. Included as uh, prohibited uses in like. Five. Maybe more. So when staff went to draft the I E C overlay. Uh. Zoning district, we naturally included these as prohibited uses because that was the thought process. For all the other rezoning conditions that went into the I E C overlay. Or that went in industrial and we're in the I E C overlay. Historically. Um.
That's the industrial part.
Correct.
I see. Correct, not the agricultural part, right?
So then when we look at what. The I E C overlay is trying to achieve. In the area management plan that was done and in staff's work in drafting the I E C overlay. It's to promote these types of uses within the core development area. Maybe that advanced manufacturing, smart logistics, agribusiness, commercial industrial opportunities. Though really to achieve that next level of business. Industrial part. Which is why the uses are, that are permitted are the ones that see in the, in the ordinance. And you might ask, well, what are we doing putting in an industrial use in an ag? Parcel. As Sean alluded to previously. This use is a special use in the agricultural. Residential and commercial districts.
Industrial.
Industrial district. So it's not, and when did it go in? In nineteen sixty-one. This use has been permitted as a special use since nineteen sixty-one in the agricultural district. So. It. It's hard to say, what, well, why are you applying, putting in an industrial use in an ag district? It, when it's always been a special use in an ag district or in an, in an industrial district.
Can you bring up the map of the I E C? Please, and so I could see the uh, the color code, I like pictures.
Sorry, I'm going there. Oh, Sean, do I have to go all the way back? Takes beautiful pictures, doesn't it?
I see the blue, about the uh, they're outside the blue, uh, that's, that's the industrial part. Talking about the ag. Do you have that delineated? And that's not delineated on that.
Oh, yeah, I keep going back.
There you go. Right there. So, within the purple, in the ag district. It, Kurt can go on there, can't he? The special use. They can't go in there, can't they? Yeah.
Yeah. Or it'd still be, the process would be the same as the one that we're hearing right now.
They would still be that for you.
Right, they wouldn't be, I understand that, but uh, no mining, but they can go outside, they're outside, they're, they're, they're outside the industrial and they're inside the ag part of the I E C. So I think that's more logical to me. Because I always go back to. Where, where we have this I E C, then all of a sudden the businesses outside these I E Cs right there because of the overlay. And just common sense dictates, I know where Smith's grandfather and in there, why come Kurt can't go in there? That's, that's my hangup, but they could go within the agricultural part.
I'm concerned. Yeah, if, if that's okay, it's quite a while to get out of these chairs, not exactly comfortable. So the, the green area that you see here, well, it, well, it has a mix of residential and ag today. It's just because it hasn't been forward for rezoning, so the county itself. Own several properties along Larison, at some point will send those forward to rezoning, uh, there's other properties that are. Being moved towards that industrial or, or the overlay classification for projects. So it's more a matter of, it just hasn't happened yet, that, that's why there's some rain versus.
But. You're gonna rezone, you're looking to rezoning those in the blue, light blue?
At, at some point, yes.
But so why still can't Kurt look at those other parcels?
I, I, and I will tell you, I think when we first met with them, they had a couple of sites within the, the core development area that they just. They weren't able to get leases on, on, on those properties.
Because it would still require a willing seller. Or leaser of, of that property, right?
We do, yeah, we own like this red property and, and up, up in the street there, we own some of those, but right now we're holding those back for the uh, interchange. And again, with, with the projects, the P M site. Other potential projects in that area, we're not sure if that's the type of use we want right on the main street as you come into the industrial part, not that it's bad. It's a great use, that we're in, need a lot of concrete. I don't want to make eye contact with. Oh, but it's, you know, I, I think at some point there could be acres adjacent.
Yeah, and you know, and that's the. It's better for them also, because they're obviously gonna be closer to the, to the G B M project and et cetera.
Yeah, and, and I think there've been comments made that it was great, this project was self in the cracks, that way they didn't have. Uh, the potential of a train slowing down concrete getting to a project site or things like that. And, and again, I think if we could find the right site in that area, I mean, I. County would certainly be supportive of that.
Within, within that, what we're talking about, the ag ice.
But it's trying to find a site. Right now, I think they're working with a family that has offered them a couple of different sites, and so they're going through the hoops and hurdles trying to. Make one of those sites work.
So you're saying, as we speak, they are talking to the family that may be willing?
Well, they're, I mean, they're working with the, the Miller family, uh, the, uh, you know, they, they had a site. They came through the process, they have another Miller family site that they're working on today. And we like the fact that it ships these vehicles out on West twenty, and if they're gonna put them out on the road, that's a substantial road to put them out on it. But we don't know what in-depth requirements are gonna be. To make this happen, they've got to go visceral first. Before they serve.
I also, I'm sorry, no. I also noticed on there, in five years, the rezoning has to come back to. They have to, they have to get approval in five years.
They would have to come back to you all for renewal of the special use. Well, not, I asked the B V A opposed the written commitment. If people were to uh, approve it and adopt. Or approve it with the arrangement, recommended by the B P A.
How normal is that? How often does that happen?
Does that happen very often? So my concern is the guy, it's gonna need a lot of concrete, I think it's out there with the roads, interchange. Buildings, things like that. And in five years could be, I mean. This is twenty twenty-three, the interchange probably won't be done until twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eighty. I mean, we're gonna need concrete for a good long time, so the fact that this is a short term use is probably somewhat of a, a missed no. I mean, I hope, I mean, I hope.
I want to hear from the petition. Sure. Sure, yeah. Question for the petitioner.
Such a question. I mean. I guess just.
Oh, go ahead, Jim.
Well, um, I'm, I'm Brad Webb. I, I know you had referenced some of those properties inside there. I I know you had referenced some of those properties inside there, correct me if I'm wrong, but Larison would be the only place we could be located because of the truck.
That is the, that is the challenge.
So I don't know how many of those properties needs to count in.
You show me the Larison on there again, but the picture is wrong. Three by three, the green.
So Larison is the the green.
Can we hold this in committee? How long can we hold this in committee?
I I check it from the.
Before we had, because it goes to that, nothing's done, it's.
Sixty day from when, um. It's approved, it's approved. On the fourteenth, so we have. Till April fourteenth, December is twenty-nine days, March has thirty-one days, our. April meeting, I think, is the ninth or the tenth. So you could hold this in committee. Once. Without a special meeting and it'd still be within the sixty days of actions not taken by April fourteen. Then it's approved. The the default is it gets approved.
So April, April ninth is drop dead date or?
Well, it always have the special meeting.
I mean, I, sorry, April fourteen, April fourteen.
Think about.
You know, we, I'm I'm for it, I'm not against it, I'm just trying to find a location inside the I E C because twenty does bother me. And plus, indax not gonna necessarily give them a rubber stamp of approval. I think it's a big safety issue on twenty, can I make a motion to hold committee? Motion to hold committee. Most of the major holding committees second with the straight, all in favor say aye, aye, propose. Lelling committee. Next, bill number twenty-six dash twenty-four, land vacationer Kelly Rowe, petitioner. Christina Gonzalez, Elias Gonzalez and Michael Ray.
Sorry, what did you? Sorry, Ben, I clicked too many, one too many.
Uh, so this is a petition to vacate, um, an unimproved extremely short street right of way, um. It really just ends into that agricultural parcel there to the north. Uh, the. Property owner to the east and to the west have petitioned to have this, um. Right away vacated. It currently doesn't provide access to any properties, uh, the county has no interest in improving it. Uh, the agricultural parcel that it ends to, um, already has, uh, its own access to an improved road, that being state road three thirty-one. It's not being used to access this property currently, it doesn't provide access to a church, school or other public building place. And it would not hinder the use of it in pretty public way, uh, the county engineer and county surveyor. Recommend approval of the vacation and the petitioner waited here patiently. Guess, yeah.
The reason we decided to vote with this is because we had to have a new septic, it's installed, a mound system. Which, if some of you aren't familiar with it, it's a big mountain. It's, but it's not called a mountain, it's called a mound, M O U N D. And some of that took over, um, that easement, that little alley there. So my neighbors, Mike and Gina Lips. Suggested that since they're getting ready to sell their property, this suggested to us that we apply for this, so that's, we decided that was a good idea. Because, um. I mean, it's not in any use, nobody uses it for anything, my neighbors would keep it up, but now, you know, he's getting older, getting ready to retire. They're getting, moving out of state, and that's why they suggested that we. We do this, so that's why we're doing it, and because our mound system is. Taking up some of that land anyway.
Any question? A motion?
Motion's unfavorable.
Or a motion by? Let's see that. Yeah, yes. You're on the, you're not on, I'm on the. All in favor say aye. Pose, okay, motion passes. Favorable to the full council's seven to three.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, last but further, it's a route, bill number twenty-one dash twenty-four, request refill ordinances related to property tax. Saint Joe County, petitioners Amy Wright and Yoda.
So this is ordinance that would scrap the current, um, tax abatement ordinance. Right now, the challenge is to simplify with economic development. Our current abatement process is very complicated, um, when companies come here, it's a thirty-seven page, uh, group of documents that they're handed. Um, so we're looking to streamline this, make it easier, um. Make people know that they could do business in in Saint Joe County, um, without a bunch of cumbersome, complicated requirements. Um, so this would be similar to what Mr. Walker does. Um, it would just have a application procedure that went with it, and then it would be between economic development and the council. To work out whether or not this company has proven on a case-by-case basis. That it deserves incentive, that it's bringing something to the table, that would be, we're granting it an incentive. So this would remove a lot of automatic qualifiers, uh, burdensome filing on. Requirements. Um, so Jeff Ray is here, he is going to go ahead and speak on this.
That actually brought a hand out there, just some frequently asked questions about the, this, try try to answer a little bit, so. Uh, Jeff Ray, President, CEO, Southern Regional Chamber of Mr. Chairman and members of committee and council, thank you for the chances. No, oh, no, I'm just speaking, uh, this, just talking about, so my experience last twenty-nine years has been working with tax abatement. In Mr. Walker, and we have a process that was developed in a bipartisan manner, in an effort to try to be simple, uh, in this process, so in that time, we modeled. Our ordinance after, um, Indianapolis ordinance, uh, we felt like, um, simple. And it really required a lot of trust between the economic development staff, which I had served as for a period of times, and the council, the the work. As you know, Mr. Walker uses this very carefully, it's kind of like you do, probably no more tax abatements than you do, they do a handful of these a year. Uh, but this is kind of a trusted process where the two walk through. Uh, this and decides really what's appropriate for a company to take away the audit offer. I put just a couple of questions, I won't bother reading these, I'll have you send this to you as well, but just a, just a couple of things, I, so Mr. Walker has no ordinance, just the application. Fill out the application, it goes to the economic development team, the economic development team reviews it, looks and sees what's appropriate, makes the recommendation. Uh, to the council, the council considers it many times like you do, goes out and visits the site, um, you ultimately make a vote on it. Still has a compliance requirement too, so they still have to file compliance paperwork, that comes back to the economic development staff, the academic development staff reviews it. Ensures it for compliance, brings it back to the council for, uh, for that experience. And this is really a trend that we think is is happening really in jurisdictions all over the place, the and and started with the I E C who has made their process and and. And in some simple, but but simple doesn't mean there's no standards, and I think that's, I think this, this part, uh, this piece of it, the the, but. I think what's hap, what's happening right now is when we hand this thirty-five page document to the folks, um, or thirty-seven page, it's it it the the first thing we tell them that it's really complicated. And and so we think the eyes of Saint Joe County are on our community like they've never been before because of razor five and N T M and. Like, for their first impression, not to be that it's really complicated to do business here. These companies have choices and those choices, uh, include outside of our jurisdiction, especially as, uh, Samsung is is doing work in Kokomo as well, we couldn't lose some of those opportunities. Uh, for our peers to the south, and we think we wanna make sure we're, um, competitive on that. Um, I I mentioned, you know, that, again, I I think what worked well in Mr. Walker was this. Process that was developed with the economic team, development team in the county, county, uh, the M county, but it still had to work very close together. Twenty-nine years, I'm hard pressed to remember a single one where, uh, we weren't able to find some common ground on it, I think the input of the council often. You know, what was going on, I think the the economic development staff took some time to get to know the things that were important, uh, to the council. Was able to make some recommendations to the company, and then it was really up to the economic development team. And the company to make the pitch as to why that incentive was, um, you know, it was warranted, so. It's worked really well, I would encourage you to reach out to, uh, to Mr. Walker council people, ask if Mr. Tanner may have some of his own experience from working, um, over that way and as a council member as well too. And so, so I just, uh, we are, we're supportive of this, uh, everybody that we've talked to that's ever navigated your process. Has said it's really complicated, we have a reputation of being one of the most complicated in the state, and and we think now's the time with the spotlight focus on St. Joseph County to try to make it it somewhat simple and. And and again, just to remind you, you're not giving up, you know, so you're still hitting the catbird, see, you know, in terms of of being able to review this and ask questions and and, uh, and. Figure out what you want, so anyway, just my.
Mr. Mr. Ray, yes, so you, so, but I heard you correctly, you said everyone that you've ever talked to, they say the same thing?
I think all the folks who have been through your process have said the same thing.
Every.
I I I think, uh, I all that, all the ones that I've worked with have said it's very complicated, I haven't had one that that said it wasn't.
Well, I can't speak to everyone, but I do know that we took, I think, then go. And it's a concern that the, there was a amount of paperwork, I don't know that there's thirty-seven pages, I think they counted the handbook today, single sided, it's seventeen, so. I, you know, I, I.
Well, seventeen, not thirty-four.
So so the ordinance is eighteen pages, the handbook is seventy pages, the information letter is two, it's sort of every one. Thirty-seven, so we can end it.
I don't think that proposed work.
So I think what's, so what Mr. Walker does is has an application, doesn't have, doesn't have an ordinance, there's, so the only mention that tax abatement official order is. Is the fee associated with filing, so, um, what the, what's happened is they agreed on an application. Uh, for that, so the staff and council have worked on what they think is appropriate, the right questions to ask and stuff, but none of that is spelled out by ordinance, I think the thought here was. A mirror that do not have that, uh, self divergity that wants to build the justification that they're.
Well, I'm not opposed to looking at our current ordinance. That certainly would always. The qualification will change, but it's soon to overhaul it. In exchange for what's perceived to be too complicated, which you pass a. I might just defer to Mr. Shall I open it? Have any, have any of the current contenders that would have been killing the county set our process, referred some to them? Or have they been on the managable?
Yeah, so what I would tell you with 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 the. Yeah, the energy center before that, so. Uh, FM. Uh, motor server, series or whatever that was. All kind of fell outside of the way we do the typical abatement ordinance, so when A M general came through last year and codes, uh, the like gasification plan down at the, uh, down. Now, why, all those follow the regular ordinance, so we kind of have a double, I don't wanna say double standard, but kind of a two-tier system of waiting. Development, that's and tax, so it's a big project, kind of follows one path, it's a small project, it follows another path. And again, usually talking about much different numbers in in those processes. To to a large degree, I think stripping out requirements we had makes it a little cleaner for our liking process from big projects. But again, I think we need to know where those those guardrails need to be for for abatement approvals and things like this. The state law, if you if you want through state law, there is, uh, enhanced. Called an enhanced tax abatement, so that that allows personal property to be instead of ten years. Right now, our current one, it's only lasts five years for personal property unless it's a, uh, a special abatement or a super abatement. So there's a lot of things that's changed and and I think we had a maybe a learning session or something to talk about, some people said. For example, we could now do agricultural tax payments for both real property and personal property. So Ken Sebastian, who's selling this property, if he needs to go build a new barn somewhere, barn silo or grain bed. That would be eligible for finding your real property tax pay, that's not something we've ever done before, so now all of a sudden we're opening up the council. For a lot more consideration of abeyments potentially. Now, in the ag community, one of the complaints we get is we're not doing enough to support ag, well, this could certainly do that. But it opens up, you know, just new areas that just need to consider. The state law also allows for residentially distressed area designation and economic development target area designations, two that are more residential specific. We've never really done residential tax payment. So I I think we just need to take a look at some of these other provisions in state law, again, I think simplifying the process is good. The other thing it would argue too is. If we could do this in one application, instead of having a real property and personal property application. Maybe just as simple as checking a couple of boxes of what you need to do. One of the complaints about the tax payment ordinance is a lot of paperwork to fill out, well, now if you're gonna apply for real property abatement and the personal property, now I gotta fill out two applications, so. And then I think there's some concerns that we have from a staff perspective on fees, so I think maybe this new ordinance, the fees would go to our office, which is fine, but we wanna make sure that. We, you know, there's probably gonna be a follow-up fee ordinance and some other things that have to be done as part of this, so I think, you know, I think that just being an opportunity has more conversation about this.
Well, so you're you're advocating before we. Vote on the proposal. Abolish the existing to have work session to look at it.
I would, I would ask that maybe you take a month and maybe, yeah, maybe we have some work sessions or an education section, session or something like that. Our office wasn't involved in in writing this new abatement ordinance, so I mean, we're we're kind of catching it on the back end, just trying to make sure.
We don't, that's why, that's why I'm asking you. That.
Joe Catherine. But in that process. Counselors, I think, maybe, sure, I think Joe. Part of that as well. So it was a bigger team that was looking at that. Like, I've got, got a holder support with the work we had done, uh, both never to. So. For that, no, they're looking at some of the brain as well, but also looking at some of the things that we want for, for each week in place, so. I would agree that we need more time and more input.
What we have, we have an ordinance in place today and projects we have going forward, we probably will follow that, that's second here, I think you will, so I I'm not concerned about those projects, but it. Right now, we don't have any spot, area, we've kind of talked about lately, it's got small project.
Holiday green, I thought last year, December, and that project kind of has faded away, that could resurface. Um, during the time period that we're working on putting this new ordinance together, and if that did resurface. They would follow the policy of the old program.
Excuse me, Mary.
I'm, Mr. Big, I'm just concerned, you know.
Well, wait, I would like to. Well, you had one citizen's speed, you had testimony from one that is.
Was asked.
She was invited to speak. She was invited. Why can't. Did you invite him to speak? She invited him to speak.
Which meant I need to speak.
Well, well, apparently, if you could, because it's. I I was gonna say, I I would agree with council, because that. Just take some more time to. Look at this proposal or look at what we have on the books now, see if we can reach common ground before we just overhaul and simply abolish the current ordinance. Look at some of the thought that went into why why to be these things, because I know when we passed. These tax abatement ordinances, there's a lot of passion in our community about us giving away tax abatements or. Allowing tax abatements, which we do, and they're great set of tools, but there also was a a component that says. What does the community get back for that?
Yeah.
You know, I can appreciate the work you've done, but it seems kind of subjective. So so whoever's in the council at the time, if this would pass, whoever's in the council at the time, you know, the, it seems a little more subjective than maybe objective. I would, I would ask for more time. Just very.
Yeah, motion's unbearable.
So, whoa, 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 hold on, hold on. Yeah, I got a motion, I got a, Randy, really, man? Now, we're we're having council discussion, you just gonna cut it off like that, man?
Alright.
I suppose.
So. Later, you didn't ask, just open it up.
We can second, or in the song, favor say aye. A both.
Aye, aye.
Sir Tanner, no. This is great.
Yes.
Saru, yes. Um, yes. The six tans, right? No, no, I'm a vote, yeah. But those four, favorable recommendation programs. That's all I have, Mr. Root.
Thank you, let's take a five-minute read up before we convene.
No.
Ready to get out of here, isn't it?
I'm.
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 All the committee meeting back to order. Next up is the rules committee, and we have a presentation tonight from Sheriff Redmond and his team. Good evening, William Redmond, offices at the jail located at four oh one Bus Sample Street, South Bend. I want to begin by thanking you, President Ruth, for getting this on the agenda and agreeing to do this. Thank all the council members for everything that you guys have done for us up until this point, uh because you guys have been all been very receptive of our concerns. I'd like to wish I had good news tonight, but I don't. Um it's actually progressively got worse for us, and so we just wanted to take a few minutes. Myself, Major Newton's going to present a little bit about the financial part of the issues we're faced with. And then Captain Rachel Zawistowski, who is our assistant warden, going to talk about just a few things that the misconceptions of running a jail and what people in the general public think versus the reality. So as you know, what I'm about to tell you isn't anything that is new to you guys, because we've all had uh open discussions in the uh. Recent budget hearings, and then we met and talked to some of you individually about our our problems. Uh this is starting to to become a crisis for us in the regards to our staff in the jail. So the limited staff, we're down fifty corrections officers now, but I think the last time we met, we were just. Think we were forty. Just in the jail. So we're down fifty in our jail. We just recently lost our warden, who decided to retire, take a new job at El Park County Jail. Um a lot of people, not only uh rookies and people that just started in our facility are leaving, but we have some veteran corrections officers that are just getting tired. And they're moving on. So they're just retiring, finding jobs other places. And so it's become a huge issue. So our current staff is suffering physically and mentally because they are being forced to work double shifts. Typically, they work a six and three rotation, so that means six days on, three days off. We're really trying, and I don't think we're affecting their days off, but there are six days on, they're getting held over and working double shifts. Two, three, four, five, sometimes all six days. And as you know, that's 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 too much to ask of our current staff. We have opened it up for overtime for our police officers that have worked in the jail before. I mean, it work overtime, getting a handful of officers that are willing to do that. But of course, it's costing uh us financially with the overtime rate. Uh on top of all the C O's that are being held over and getting also paid overtime. We have. Done everything we could think of, tried new ideas. As you know, we talked about civilianizing our front tower. Uh we currently have two C O's that work up in that front tower, so our. Uh plan was to civilianize that, hire two people uh that are not corrections officers, eliminate those positions, so those two individuals would then be in the facility uh working. We've uh talked about part time positions. Um we have done everything we can think of in regards to promoting our department. We have done television ads, social media billboards. Been at multiple job fairs, uh the four H fair, we've gone into several of our local high schools, trying to recruit. Um soon to be graduates who maybe are not going to go to college. Maybe maybe they are going to go to college, but they're going to stay here and they could work as well as get their education. Uh those seniors who are not going to join the military, so we're trying to recruit uh those individuals. I don't, as sheriff, want a whole jail full of eighteen year olds by any means, but I can tell you it does work. We just interviewed two individuals, young men who joined our department when they turned eighteen. One just turned twenty one in uh January, right? And then one is going to turn twenty one in June, and we have interviewed both of them to be uh promoted to the rank of officer. So they have done a great job, so it does prove that it can. And so those two individuals will be uh amongst a group of four. Uh corrections officers that we would like to promote from the jail to patrol. But we can't take all four of them out of the jail at the same time because of the staffing issues that we have in type there. Um testing process, I'll give you an example. We had ten applicants. That applied and they were scheduled to take a written test, a written aptitude test today. Of those ten, five people showed up, and of those five, one passed the aptitude test. We have had individuals recently that have gotten hired. The last uh uh hiring process we had, we had two individuals. Of those two, only one has continued to work after the training and getting hands on in the jail. So we have a huge issue. So we're trying to attract more people. The biggest thing that keeps coming back to me is uh pay. And being able to stay compatible to surrounding departments. We are, even though you guys, like I said, have been very receptive of pay raises, we went from forty one thousand to forty five thousand. Um even though that wasn't part of the plan, because we had already had that three year agreement for the five percent, five percent, five percent, you guys were generous enough to bump that up to forty five thousand. We have uh several comparisons from surrounding departments. Uh that uh Rachel is going to share uh with you tonight. She has a print uh. Uh printout to pass out to everybody, but it shows you some of the surrounding areas, departments, what their pay scale is. Most of them are at least fifty. The fifty five thousand dollar roughly, so that's what we are thinking that we may ask for, or at least. Try to do.
Rachel, you're a word. Looking at our paid schedule. Budget, you know how many of Russian officers appear? It says nineteen at the high end pay of fifty eight thousand. You know how many of those positions are filled roughly? I think it's right around seventy. The people have a higher. So those, oh, they're. Are that much?
Yeah. Right, I I can't afford to how many. No, I ironically.
Sure. Yes, sir. He said that ten percent rate of needing the test. So from your time, if you contact an applicant and say, like you enough to have you committed to take this test. For the time they take the test and complete the test, festival, if you're paying one out of ten or ten percent to get through that front, that normal? You said that.
Re- recently, it seems to be pretty pretty standard. That's what that's what we're dealing with. I think the test the test process before that, we had five that said they were going to come take the test and only like two showed up.
So to get through the test, through the testing process, you need to to fill that fifty. Five hundred. People show what to say yes to. And then hundred fifty on go on. About that fifty.
Like if if she, our recruiter, has seven people that are supposed to take the test, real show up. It's legitimately probably for the last few months, it's been when she sets up the testing, only half show up, and then out of that half. Maybe one or two.
It's like discuss, it's it's a aptitude test, basic English and math. It's not even math, I'm sorry, not there's not math on this part of the test. The math is then part of the testing. So it's reading, basic reading comprehension, and like I said, five today took the test and only one of those five passed.
So somebody could have helped them apply, but they're on their own for the back.
We talked about that. We we don't want to lower.
Yeah.
Standards to come into our facility, because they have to be able to read warrants, they have to be able to charge somebody in the jail, they have to be able to write a report. In the jail, and then if they have any future uh goal of becoming a police officer, that's all we do. Take reports and type and run things through the computer system. So they have to have some basic. English and math skills to be able to do the job as police officer and correctional. I want to say some, Sheriff, just some of you may not know, my nephew does work as a correction. Been there seventeen, eighteen years. I've never discussed anything about his job. I haven't seen him in three. But anyway, just so you guys.
See Sergeant.
He's got promoted, I'm sorry.
Uh my sister. Anyway, that's. That's about that. But you guys. Now I know why you haven't seen him in three. Could the overtime pay you're paying, how many officers could we hire at regular rates?
Who's the financial guy?
After I think our old that payback. Gold on rate. Six hundred, I don't know, seven hundred thousand. At a unit rate, if you're budgeting out, but that's probably because they said twelve, thirteen, fourteen. Alright, so that would. For forgive me for not knowing something on something I have, we're down fifty, but what's the overall budget number of staff?
Happy to help you guys, Sheriff, because they're playing on a lot of the under.
I'll turn it over to Steve to talk a little bit about the financial side of things, and then we'll get to uh Rachel.
I'm not, I'm not going to go on long. Um. At the break, and I'll just use a, before I came here, I worked three decades with South Emily. What you gave five percent rate, five percent, five percent rate, three years ago. And. I'll think Patrick, we would have jumped up and down for that. Well, and since I've left South Bend five years, their pay has gone up over thirty three percent just because of the competitive markets. Um we talked about. Uh five, three hundred or five hundred, when I applied to the Southern. Lucky, they're lucky even now. It's thirty at the rate they're at, so it's just kind of mostly. Some of the things we've done in the jail is we've been using a lot of compulsory money. Some of the things we've done in the jail is we've been using a lot of confiscory money to uh. Not come to you with. As most people know, the jail is now about twenty-five, twenty-six years old. But we've had some things that had to be replaced. The one sixty spends was, it's been, was seventy-eight thousand dollars for. Still gonna have, that was kind of, we lost the repeater, had to get a Band-Aid on it right away. On the security fund, they put another twenty-two thousand into, play the system. Then build a review institute, then building a church. Yes, that one, if you add twenty-seven years old. Also had to do a major camera upgrade, get them off the bandwagon. On storage purposes, that was a three-hundred, six-thousand-dollar project. If that, confiscory funds. Just a brief overview of confiscory funds, so they're generated by inmates who purchase snacks.
Andy, Andy.
Well, you'll see by like the. That they can learn outside of just like the regular use of, like, papers, um.
Or trading, kind of thing. Replace some old furniture. Again, twenty-something year old kind of time. A little bit of something to base it to. This is the furniture for that. That, the chair, office chair.
It makes stuff every year that's already.
You know, more than your average officer power is. Um, one thing we do, we are going to go back to US Marshals. And try and renegotiate, negotiated years ago. Got our daily allowance up to seventy-four dollars a day. You're now eligible again to go back in, that's based on. Populations, based on numerous factors, several of those changes. Or we want to take lead on that again, hoping. Find a whole percent, twelve percent. Fortunately, the state is controlled by state statute. That hasn't seen a lot, did see it, don't know about two dollars and fifty cents, or don't, thirty-seven, but. Have not seen anything. Last thing I'll say, again, I just called out city cop for thirty years. If I went to jail, I dropped some coffee, I had no idea. I think it made it like shut down, everybody went to bed. Twenty-four hour city. But Rachel explained all that.
Fair that I'm Rachel House, I'm the assistant board. Um, four-one-one thing, both of them there for seventeen years, um. We do appreciate everything that you guys have done. I don't want to bore you with lots of numbers, there's lots and lots of numbers on here. So I'm just going to touch on a few things. Um, if you look through the first few pages, you'll see that our. Daily inmate population has been rising and our staffing numbers have been falling. For the last few years. I didn't incorporate twenty-twenty and anything because that was a weird year. Our inmate numbers were super low because a lot of people are getting released. So that doesn't really count for anything, but. Um, a lot of this started during the COVID. People weren't coming to work, people were working from home, and we've been having a hard time staffing ever since. I've got a few misconceptions of the jail in here. A lot of people don't know, I, I could, I could write books on this. Um, of what, you know, people think happens in jail, or you know, what people see on TV in jail and, and. I just tried to touch on a few things. One thing, we do not only house adults. Um, we hold on average six to ten juvenile inmates, which is. Not easy for us. We are not PRA compliant. Um, I don't know if you guys know what PRA is, the Prisoner. Break Elimination Act. We are not a PRA compliant facility. Um, anyone that is under the age of eighteen is not supposed to have sight or sound. Uh, contact with adult inmates. We have no choice. Um, we put them in the house or in the booking site cells. Um, the book area, yes. So. Have you all been in, in the jail? Okay. So you know, there's the big holding cells and then there's like all the single cells around. That's where our juveniles are. Because that's the only way that we can monitor and limit. Limits the amount of contact they have with adults, which obviously they're seeing them constantly, they're talking to them constantly. We can't do anything else. We don't have anywhere to put them. Um, when those juveniles come out. For any reason, if they have to come out to go to court, if they have to come out for showers, which they come out for showers every night, they have record every night. The entire jail has to lock down and stop. Because we cannot have a juvenile inmate and an adult out at the same time, because if there's any kind of cross. Contamination, I guess, you can call that. Um, that's a big, big, we're already on client with Korea, that would make it even worse. Um, so midnight shift takes care of the juvenile showers and booking. So at night, now imagine a Saturday night in South Bend, Notre Dame home game. Whole bunch of people are getting arrested. Booking has to hold whoever's in the vestibule, in the vestibule until they can get. One fish time, back to the shower area. Power out, then you gotta wait. Bring inmates back out. I mean, that, it's, it's very time-consuming for our booking staff. Um, so that's a, one of the things, um, midnight shift takes care of several things for medical. Um, they have two med passes, they have Suboxone pass, so. Several uh, inmates are on Suboxone to help with um. Overdose of B-Box protocol. They have to come down to the medical unit every night. And sit there and be watched for twenty minutes after they take their pill that has to dissolve and then has to be packed. So. Last, I'm not sure how many are on it right now, but our highest that I know was fifteen. Out of those fifteen, not everybody gets along. So three have to go here. We have to go here, seven have to go here. That's an officer for each one that has to sit there and watch them. Shave pass is required by Indiana jail standards. We have to allow every general population inmate the right or the ability to shave. Um, three times a week unless for some reason, safety, security, something happens. That happens on the mix. So every area of the jail that has this general population, including females. Get to shave. That requires staff to watch them. Our inmate workers have to shave every day because they're working with food and um, passing food. Suicide watch showers are completed on midnights. Um, there's an average of fifteen to thirty inmates on suicide watch at any given time. That requires two officers per person. Extreme caution inmate showers are done. Uh, extreme caution inmates are inmates who have been either um. Escape risks. Um, have shown violent tendencies towards staff or other inmates, or have threatened physical harm on staff. Uh, those require at least two people, sometimes more, sometimes three, sometimes four, depends on the inmate. And I will add on this, in the last couple of months, staff assaults have skyrocketed. At least once a week, our staff is going out for um, being spit on, having urine thrown on them. Um, last week, actually, one of the eight, oh, almost. Twenty-one-year-olds was punched in the head several times by an inmate. Our old warden, a few months ago, was punched in the face by a guy standing at the booking desk. It's, it's.
Why?
Uh, because he pulled away from him.
No, I mean, why do you see an increase?
There's, it's, it's different. Inmates are different. Um, it's hard to explain, it's, people are different now. There's not a lot of respect.
Do you, do you think, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, but do you think the fact that. These guys are working all this overtime and maybe they're less aware because the hours they're working could have something to do with that?
Absolutely, absolutely. That's, that's extremely possible. That's another concern that we have here.
Yeah.
Uh, we're dealing with a more violent society than we have in the past, without a doubt. I don't think anybody can disagree with. We're dealing with more violent people who go hands-on versus solving a disagreement with pocket. Um, we're dealing with more mental health and. To get to that here in a minute, but mental health is another issue, which we've, we've discussed in the past.
Um, all the inmates facility-wide shakedowns are completed, um. He actually just had to shake down the entire facility, uh, three, four months ago. Um, looking for contrabands, which can range anywhere from. Having extra clothes to having weapons and drugs. Hidden somewhere, um, unfortunately, you know, we go through detailed. Cat downs, we put people through body scanners, things get missed, not everything shows up, um, Suboxone. Apparently is easy to hide and there's a lot of Suboxone in the jail. Um, so we're always doing shakedowns every week, at least. At least one night a week, if not multiple nights and days a week. Uh, laundry passing, cleaning for duty, for duties are done on midnights. Prison train sports get dressed out and ready to leave on midnights and they have to do breakfast meal pass. So this is supposed to be the least busy time of the day. In the jail and obviously, that's a lot and that's nothing compared to like what first and second shifts do. Um, another thing, uh, another misconception is. Our maximum capacity is eight hundred and twenty-nine inmates. We're under that right now. Yesterday, um, our population was seven hundred and twenty-three. So it's like, oh, we've got plenty of room. No, we don't. Um, again, they don't get along. A lot of people don't get along, which. Starts making movement difficult. Uh, you know, Joe Blow doesn't get along with. John Smith, who's in A-three, so now they have to get moved to, one of them has to go to A-five. Oh, but he doesn't get along with so-and-so that's in A-five, so now we gotta move him to B-five. Somebody doesn't get along there. After a while, they get put on lockdown where they're, they're not housed with anybody. So you take a two-man room and put one person in it. That cuts down, obviously, our housing room from two to one. Got twenty inmates that are like that, twenty cells, that's ten, ten beds right there that are gone. Um, we have. Uh, people who are on medical work surface because they have proceeds. Because they have um, wheelchair, walking aids, they can't be housed with other people because those things can be used as weapons. That cuts it down. When you start having, um. COVID outbreaks or, you know, there's been MRSA, there's been LACE, there's been SCV. You have to shut down units and quarantine them and treat them. That cuts down. Movement and makes things so difficult for our classification staff because they don't have anywhere to put people. And we have to be really creative sometimes. We make it work, but it's difficult. Um. Other thing, a lot of people believe that mentally ill, people go to mental hospitals, Oklahoma and F word. This is, um, I had a meeting today with our NERFing staff. And every month we go over the numbers from the month prior. Last month, our average daily population was seven hundred and thirty-two people. Out of that, seven hundred and thirty-two, six hundred and nineteen are on medications. Three hundred and thirty are on psychotropic medications. Half of our inmates are on some kind of mental health drug. Are going through Oklahoma, are dealing with all of that and that is. Some of it is as easy as, you know. They just have like simple anxiety to have a schizophrenia, they hear voices that tell them to kill everybody, they see. Some of our staff, I mean, dealt with people who cover themselves in excrements and we have to. Watch them and clean them and it's. Not what. A jail is made.
Yeah, would you say over half of the inmate population is on some type of. Psycho medication? Is, is that a consistent, yes, number? Can you go back years?
Yeah, hey, yeah, so um, our mental health provider now is well-passed and we, we get these every month. Oh, that's what I meant, I'm sorry. Medical provider is well-passed and we get these every month and I've looked through the. Um, the numbers and I was actually keeping track of them for a while and yes, consistently. If not fifty percent, pretty close to fifty. It was like, this is just shy of fifty percent, but I mean, it's, it's up there.
Yeah, it's kind of well-passed, doesn't really have control over that as far as the. That's coming, so.
And so show obviously this. This number of over half, they assist a lot of you advocating for some type of mental. It'll, it'll.
That's why I've been a huge proponent of mental health facilities.
Right, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Because anytime we take an individual into our facility, for whatever reason they're there. It's a liability to me as sheriff and a liability to everybody in this room.
Correct.
We have had people die in our jail. And it has been, it's generally been because of natural causes. Nothing abusive, all the autopsies have come back, but we are responsible for that individual. So it was shortly after that person dies. We then get a tort claim. And tort notice that we're going to be sued by the.
That's exact, exactly, exactly.
So.
And the perception of, of the public is automatically.
Wrongdoing.
Exactly.
Something bad happened to them at the, at the end of the staff.
Yes.
That's not the case. Typically, when you, when you see the numbers that you're seeing there, here tonight. That a lot of the individuals that come through our system are not in the best health. There, there's drug addiction, there's mental health issues, there's alcoholism, there's all kinds of things going on. Even though we have a full-time medical staff, twenty-four, seven. They can't, they don't know everything that's going on with that person when they come into our facility. So we have had people die in. Because it is a big liability to us as the county, uh, when we're dealing, we're, we're not trained professionals on mental health.
I would like to shout out though. The seriously mentally ill, I, the amount of compassion and empathy that they give is. Better than I've seen from people who actually work in those areas. So I would like to actually say that they're. Amazing when it comes to it.
What, what happens if you have somebody, because I've just heard different things and everybody's different with whatever drugs they're on. But when you have people that come in addicted to certain drugs. You know, I've heard you can't just take everybody off of them right away because they might have a reaction that could lead to death. I, I don't, I don't know the details. But how do you guys handle that? How do you check that in?
The nursing staff detoxes them. So they will actually do um, a drug analysis on them, see what they're on, and they will put them on a detox program. Um, if somebody has to go. I mean, sometimes it just gets that bad where someone has to go, or they'll lie when they come in and say that they are not on anything or haven't been on anything and then. You know, they'll start throwing the signs of detox, and so the nurses will put them on protocol, they'll end up going off to the hospital sometimes, sometimes they don't, it just depends. Um, but we don't just cut them off. And that's also where. Um, but we don't just cut them off. And that's also where uh suboxone comes in. We also do Victory Clinic. I forgot about Victory Clinic. Um, Victory Clinic comes in. That's a methadone clinic. They come in every day on midnights and um. And do methadone as well.
Is that on something you can, does it get you off that? Yeah, methadone.
Methadone and spoxin are both. Basically forms of.
But I mean, is there a time that you get off of that or you just on it all the time that that just makes change?
It would be meaning.
But is but is it?
Supposed to be. Yes.
But no, I know that, but I'm saying are there people that just don't come off of that? My question. So people to be honest, for like.
Yeah. Here's, yes. That's a nonstop.
Yeah, there's where overdose death, I think, is within seven days of being released from jail. And it's all done in the jail. We're all in the jail. We just, I just attended the Sheriff's Association Congress last week. And not every jail has full time medical staff like we do. So we are fortunate. To have a nurse look at everybody that comes in and give an evaluation to that individual almost immediately. And they will sometimes will refuse acceptance of that person. If it's something that's concerning to them and then that officer arresting officer has to take them to more hospital. Or evaluation or sign off. So we're fortunate to have that. Uh, twenty four seven care. Uh, there are jails throughout this. State of Indiana that don't have that.
They have officers tapping notes. Officer, they have officers that will pass notes. Okay. Also touching on the hospital. Um. Last month, we had. Twelve inmates go out to emergency. The emergency room. They were at the hospital for twenty seven days total. So that's. Be hit and miss, but. That's at least one person sitting in the hospital that doesn't count towards our. In. Out. So if we've got and it happens before where we've had three or four people at the hospital, we have to figure staff out. We've had to call patrol in. To go to the hospital because we had nobody left. The sentence. So. That is.
And then all these issues that we're discussing doesn't include our employees who become sick. Have COVID. Uh, newborn babies.
Yeah.
Uh, they have their own medical issues. So we have. Double staff on length duty and can only work certain areas of the jail.
I I thought your officers have got six, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I.
I wish that was.
There is some nasty virus that has gone around since like November and our staff has been sick. Over and over again and they're still showing up and doing what they gotta do every day. I mean. And they know they like they don't even want to call in sick because they don't wanna, you know. Hurt their partners. Oh, starting in November, all of the the whole jail has been quarantined at one point or.
Even though pandemic still still strange. So I've got it contained and otherwise. Early trial or if I if I may, I don't wanna oversimplify this and I'm sure you've got the word and or or.
Oh, no.
Share with us. But it sounds to me like this is kind of like the three legged stool that's impacting each other. One. Is a substandard facility, not because we built a substandard facility, but the rules have changed, right? We're housing. Minors in a way that we have to because the world's saying we have to do that that way, but we don't have a dedicated facility for those minors outside of this jail facility. Um, and and then the other various factors that go into that. Uh, we're dealing with X, what I'm just gonna generally call external factors, uh. Uh, a lack of uh uh. Adequate or extensive mental health care that would alleviate some of these people from ending up or any in jail.
A lot of.
Um, and and to that extent, if another facility that specialized in that existed, it wouldn't necessarily go away, but it would alleviate some of those pressures. And then recruiting and retention and all three of them stays are simultaneously influencing each other. And I'm not gonna say that I've got an answer for all of these, but I do have a question as it relates to the recruitment and. Um. We've lost probably some people, uh, we've heard at least the warrant to other departments through retirement or otherwise. Um. And we've increased the pay, but not substantially enough to where uh it's enhancing our recruitment and retention of more people, right? Uh, we're currently on an eight hour shift and I know that's a very intense eight hours. Uh, but people are also already working twelve plus hours because of overtime, right? And they're getting called in outside of that.
Yeah.
They're not.
Get held in now.
They don't get called down, but they are frequent twelve hour shifts. Sixteen hour shifts doubles.
Yeah.
Things of that nature. So. I know this isn't an easy thing to suggest in this room. It would be something that would require commissioners, council, F O B, the sheriff's department. But I. The Mitchell Walker, uh. Don't have no staff to switch to the given schedule, the twelve hour uh seven days on.
Which a um.
So we're we're like back ended into. Only do it this way because of just how dire streets we're in.
Right.
If if we were able to, and and I maybe this guy in the sky, but if we were able to get to the point where we stepped up a little bit. Just to enable that pitman schedule to where they're working seven out of fourteen days.
Thirty five to thirty seven, we would need to hire to be able to get to that point.
And and for anybody in the room who doesn't isn't aware of this, like it was just implemented January first for the city of Mishawaka with their police department. Uh. If allowed for their current level of officers. To meet their needs uh rather than the budgeted amount because there was a gap similar to this, but not as extreme. Uh, but they switched from three eight hour shifts to two twelve hour shifts. Um, it allowed them to reduce effectively their budgeted staff by twenty five to thirty percent. Grant twenty five to thirty percent raises to that staff to make up the difference. Um, and it guaranteed everybody every other weekend off. Uh, so roughly slightly more hours worked in a year. Uh, but it's more substantial breaks, more frequent breaks uh or giving up a twelve hour day system.
So. We did twelve hour shifts. Years ago. And I worked them. Um, I'm actually one of the only man staff left that did. And. We didn't have enough staff then. And then we lost more afterwards. So. We have to manage it. We absolutely have to. So, you know, if we only have. Ten people, that's not enough, you know, obviously to. To fill this spots that need to be filled, you know, we've got, you know, units that need to be covered. Um, if somebody has to go to the hospital, there have to be people there. So. We talked about twelve hour shifts again. But the thing is, is like, okay, so. There's only five people working and we need fifteen. Where are we gonna pull these ten people from? We have to pull people in on their days off. That's what happened before. We got called in on our days off. I can tell you, I worked almost three years straight. Um. We were on call. Every other day. If we went to twelve hour shifts right now, we'd have to do the same thing. We would have absolutely no other option. And if we start taking our people's days off away, we're not gonna have anybody left. Yeah. So.
We 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 went, if we didn't have enough people to do the pitman schedule, we went through this to figure it out. We could probably give. Fourteen to sixteen positions back, so to speak. But. If it stands now. We're afraid we just. Make it worse.
Right, because the reduction that Mishawaka was able to. Enjoy it, if you will, was a twenty five percent reduction. We're already at like a. Almost forty percent.
Right.
Reduction and I I understand there are. Profound consequences.
Right. But we have entertained that. We have had. Lengthy discussions about ten hour shifts, twelve hour shifts. We we. Think we've thought about everything that possibly put in.
You hope people walk the road to helping the jail. We don't. It's voluntary. So are you getting to that point though?
Um.
That'd be, we could be heading in that direction, yes.
You're short twenty on the road.
Then that's the. Other issue, if we start pulling. Mandating people from patrol to come into the jail, are they gonna leave? And go to another department because I don't have to work in the jail if I work here. And that's another thing we're trying to avoid. So.
Big difference taking somebody voluntarily versus telling. So La Porte County is fully staffed. And. So La Porte County jail. This is weird. Is is fully staffed, but they don't have enough patrol ops. I just spoke to the sheriff last week. The sheriff has asked corrections officers. Who wants to go out and be a patrol officer? And they wanna stay in the jail. Versus going out.
Why?
Or dead run?
I don't know.
Is the poor dead run? And and the sheriff can't, the sheriff can't explain it either. The sheriff couldn't explain it either.
So we're twenty short on patrol officers. So we're seventy short, Tony.
Correct.
Don't forget anything we do, if we do anything with with the county jail. We already have a shortage, for example, of the duty center. Former director of the right, I also short of the J J C. So. Corrections officer, anything we do for responding, if we if we consider. Anything for the jail. Probably gonna have a ripple effect on the hit. These other twigs. And also how his inmates or or. The sheriff, your pay is higher than Duke and J J C, right?
We've been getting people from Duke and J J C.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So I'm saying if we make a change here, we're gonna have to some other change. Those facilities.
Well, so just internally, if we do this for the COs, I'm gonna give. Pressure for police officers too. And we're gonna have to do something with the police side of things also. That's coming next, but we. We we feel that this is a crisis. We gotta do something to. Try to get people. Interested in becoming involved in the corrections field. And get people in 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 that jail. We have to. Um, so we feel that we have done everything we can up to this point. Uh. And so that's why we're here.
Is there fingers? Steve, so.
So in the back of the, um. The last few pages are numbers from other agencies. Um. I just went with who was close in perimeter and who was close in size ish. You know, we're what the fifth largest county in the state, so. Like, like. I think Lake is second.
Alan.
Uh, Alan was third, yeah. And Allen County Jail, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, you're good.
Uh, Allen County Jail is fully staffed. And they are actually modeled after us. I we, I was at the sheriff's conference with Sheriff Redmond and. I sat there and picked. Their jail commander's brain for a couple hours and they're fully staffed and they're jailed.
So I'm sure you're talking about.
Yep.
I mean, if we got fully. For world, if you got fully staffed, how does this affect us? We're out to pay him more. Sure, you're talking about pay. We're to pay him quite a bit more to get more people. That's that's a given. I don't think anybody else. I didn't find you front.
Some round numbers. I'm sure you guys were too, like, you gave everybody in the jail five thousand dollar raise.
Right.
Then the. Then the sheriff needs to give out fifteen spots that he's not filling today.
You're not gonna, you're not gonna, you're not gonna be.
You're not filling fifty five today.
Right, exactly.
You'd be happy if you filled thirty five.
Exactly. That's five thousand.
Five thousand dollar raise.
What about some, what if, then we go back to square one if that's enough, that that doesn't do anything?
That gets you pretty close to all these other counties because they're all like fifty, fifty two, fifty three. They get you in the. Little spit industry.
We think that would do something.
Yeah.
Joe, um, you said, well, that's not enough. When we met. We talked about benefits. Do you compare benefits to other counties too? Not just like insurance or anything like that. But. In addition to insurance, it would be like their part time, like compared their schedules, like what else is intriguing? These people, we kind of talked about like people aren't really. Interested in the retirement plan that Sancho's county representative has, which is. Great. But, yeah. Like, right, but. Is it just salary that you're finding? Or are there other?
That's what the consensus seems to be for us is salary. Young, young people, young people are not worried about pensions. They're not worried about health insurance.
That was actually a thing.
To answer your question, Abby, that one. Basically is gonna be close to equal because corrections officers are not merit officers, so they cannot have their own pension system. They're all in the same pension system, whether they're in. La Porte County, Allen County, Vanderburg County. So corrections officers are all in this. In. All in the. The regular, right, so like that's. That's one thing I, you know, as far as their health benefits, I I'm sure they're. Similar, maybe. Four fifty each way, I don't know.
Arguably, they have a little freedom in the state. Let's keep that for ourselves, right?
I won't argue that.
But if you're gonna be like one. You're gonna increase your.
The one, the other, they have been here five years and all of a sudden John comes in, he's getting paid as, you're gonna, which you get created domino effect of your current folks. Yeah, that that's what we would like to do here.
We wanna go open the hole.
Yes, we would like to, we would like to give an increase to the entire. Staff, not just the. Entry level. Uh, because if we we give the entry level another five thousand dollars, they're gonna be up there with people that have been there for several years.
I assume none of my members do. The whole. I could somebody to stay a CEO instead of going to the merit, to the merit.
There are people that do decide to do that.
Yeah.
That's seventeen years. Uh, Warden Olmstead just retired with twenty three years. We have people that have certainly made this a career. But I think if we. We have to, we have to, this has to be a domino effect. We have to. Uh, give all of our staff an angry. Keep our batteries. You know, to get those entry levels. We just lost three. Police officers to the city of South Bend. Three, then just up and left and went to South Bend. One went to Mishawaka. Um.
Retirement jobs. So get.
There, the H L school system. Uh, these guys that were getting ready to retire. They left early to become school resource officers.
This is the end of all town of. Our.
Yes, your health officer, but I mean, simply if you're hurt to be in that jail and we look you up. I mean. So the road guy gets paid more, right?
Right. It it's it's hard to balance out those, right? Unless you've done both. You you have, people have no idea. I've done both. And the jail. Is just as dangerous of the as the road patrol. It just depends on the scenario. You get somebody who. Is meant to have some serious mental issues. Now you got corrections officers physically physically trying to restrain that person who would take risks and be hurt, right? And then patrol officers are dealing with a total different. Uh, variety of balls because they don't know what they're going to. So it's it's hard to balance the two and as sheriff, it's even more difficult because I got one side saying, you know, we're, we do. We do more on this side than this side in fights first. But they're equally as important. The jail side just often gets forgotten about because everybody just like. They don't think about it, see it. And they don't see it.
What if we tried to cost out the Allen County? Model, because you seem to think that was a close model of us.
They actually modeled off of us. They modeled off of our jail. They modeled off of, I guess, a lot of um way that we run. Things. So. There's.
And they're in the process of having a new jail built too. They were sued by the uh ACLU. Recently.
But I like their idea of having a beginning, waste and another increase after six months. That might be good.
Yeah.
What if we worked with your even cost of that out? Think you could do.
Like still in favor of bumping everybody up, but I think that you're also going to need another step. In the recruiting part of it and enticing somebody, enticing people with like a true incentive on getting them in. Yeah.
How does that help though, one out to have some tests? Me, that to me just seems to be an proxy.
You gotta remember. The other four.
More and better people. Might, yeah, might be in the opposite.
It's simply frustrating when you expect ten people to show up and only half of them. I mean, that in itself is frustrating.
And what's the caliber of candidate? Does the caliber of candidate and they're likely to show up increase because it's a higher base pay? But. But the proof's in the pudding, right?
Okay, we're open.
Yeah.
Saying, well, why don't I just go over to the opener? I'm gonna do the same job and make the same amount of money or I'm gonna make more money than I am, you know. There because other departments pay, well, we do too, but pay for experience. So, you know, if their pay differential is higher. You can go not only making ten thousand dollars more off the bat, but go there like our award. He, he was a major on our department. With twenty-three years on, he went to. At a training, twenty, making money than he was. So.
Guess we need to wrap this up, Tony, for the play. Thank you for coming in today, wanna thank all of you for your time and.
Can you guys, John, get with Steve and talk to them about? Yeah, you can do that. Well, if the Allen County rate pays.
Sometimes of the essence, right? Okay. Of the essence, so we're not, we're, we're, you gotta give them, like, yes.
You're down to fifty, you gotta do it.
Discussing already. Thank you very much.
Six o'clock for Jen's birthday dinner.